That's the number seven.
Number seven, Hoxsey, number seven.
Yes.
All right, folks, I got six o'clock. Let's sit down, turn off your cell phones, silence everything, let's get ready. Always writing on the Director of Public Works. All right, six o'clock, I call this meeting a Saginaw City Council order, please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
Thank you, please be seated. I do not see Pastor Dennis Hudson anywhere.
He had to go out there.
All right. Do I have a volunteer that would like to do the invocation?
Right here, sir.
Yes, sir, please.
Specifically came just for this occasion. If you're inclined, so, bow with me. Gracious heavenly Father, thank you for this opportunity to come before you this Tuesday evening, thank you for all the many blessings you bestow upon us. Please be with this crowd as we deal with different decisions that we made tonight, and just everyone keep their wits about them and do what's right for our city. In the name of Jesus, we pray, amen.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much. Our participation is covered on the screen. If there's an item you wish to speak, please see the City Secretary and fill out one of these forms. You can speak on any posted agenda item. Also, if it is a public hearing, and I call this in a public hearing, you don't have to fill out a form, you just can come up whenever it's time to speak, so be ready. Moving forward to the consent agenda, I've had requests to pull E, F, and G. So we'll go A, action regarding minutes of September 6th, B, action regarding resolution 2022-19, approving and negotiating settlement between the Atlas City Steering Committee, C, action regarding resolution 2022-21, annual approval of investment policy, D, action regarding increasing the general fund emergency reserve balance to 440,000 to comply with financial management policy. Skipping to H, considering action regarding acceptance of right-of-way dedication for Saginaw Square Boulevard drainage utility easement, and I, action regarding an access agreement for 400 South Saginaw Boulevard and 405 South Belmont and authorizing the mayor to execute the same. Questions, comments on A, B, C, D, H, and I? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I make a motion that we approve consent agenda A, B, C, D, H, and I as presented.
Mr. Park, second. Please cast your votes. All right, thank you, folks. Let the record reflect, we do have a quorum, a full house tonight, so thank y'all for coming. So pulling action item, or item number E, action regarding moving city council meeting scheduled for Tuesday, October 4th. What's the question on E?
Mayor, I'd like to recommend that we just cancel that meeting for that week. I understand it has, involves a lot of high-dollar park and recreation dollars. I know there was a lot of concern when we moved, it was, I think, called The Villas, but now it's called Hardwick Estates. We moved that to a Monday night, there were a lot of people that were, that wanted to attend but had not been aware. It was a special meeting, I wouldn't mind a Monday, but regularly, regular council meetings, I prefer to leave those on our regular days.
Mondays are kind of hard for me, too.
The question is, can that, the items wait?
Can the items wait?
Yeah, that's the question. Anybody know the answer to that? Mr. Parks Board, you know the answer to that?
Sure.
Randy, you think we're okay?
Not a problem.
So we can wait till the next regular council meeting, which would be October the, whatever the date, 16th, 18th?
The 10th?
No.
Not 10.
Oh, the 4th, 11th?
Yeah.
18.
Five.
So everything can wait till the 18th, you think? Not a problem. All right. Counsel, are you okay with that? Everybody okay with that?
I think it's a good idea.
All right, so let's say we need a motion to say cancel. What do we need a motion for? Somebody help me out here.
To cancel the meeting.
I guess cancel the fourth.
So it doesn't technically require a formal motion, you certainly could take one, otherwise it's just a consensus of counsel, it's just a scheduling matter.
I think counsel is in agreement that we'll cancel the fourth.
Cancel the October 4th meeting.
I'll go with meeting and carry on business the next scheduled council meeting. Everybody getting with that?
Good.
Excellent. F is action regarding an agreement with Fort Worth Transportation Authority, training Metro for Tarrant County Transportation Services of elderly and disability, disabled people. Keith, Keith Reinhardt.
Hello, Mayor and Council, thank you. Wanted to update you on this, we've got our agreement that was sent to us from the Fort Worth Transportation Authority. We partner with them for transportation for our elderly and persons with disability. It's an agreement that we've had in place for, I've been here 19 years and I know it was in place before that. What they do, for most of the time that I've been here, they've provided one day of service, which was a Monday, and I believe it was a year, maybe two years ago, they received a grant, the Tarrant County Transportation Services received a grant which allowed them to add an additional day, which was Wednesday. We were informed, in a way, I guess, I'm glad you pulled this so I can update you on this, because we were informed that they did not receive that grant, so they're not able to offer that extra day, going back to just the one day. The fees are still the same, the grant that they got before covered the cost of adding that extra day, but like I said, they didn't get the grant.
Okay, so Tiff, I mean, so what we're doing is the $1,795, there's 52 Mondays, of course, so every Monday they get paid 34.51, whether or not they get a rider, and then the riders pay on an average of $5 a trip?
That's, $5 round trip, yes.
And so what on the Mondays if they don't come? I mean, I'm not trying to be cheap or anything, I'm trying to figure out if they could come on a Wednesday, you know what I mean, shuffle around, but they won't do anything like that?
I asked them at the, I believe it was the August 2nd city council meeting, I got direction from Council to see what else is available, or what they can offer additionally, and I reached out to them at that point. The last conversations I had with them were towards the end of August, and they said that somebody was going to reach out and get that information, just trying, I was trying to get to the right person.
Right.
And then they said so and so person's name was going to reach out to me, and they never heard anything, so I reached out to them, again, just checking where things were, and then found out that the person, unfortunately, the person that I was supposed to reach out to me passed away unexpectedly, which explains why I never heard from them. But they said that they're going to get back with me with that information, if not later this week, then probably next week, so.
So do you think it might be possible to get another day also?
It's possible, the problem, or, well.
More transportation, not less.
It's very possible, it's just that there's a cost that comes along with it.
Okay.
The fee that they've charged, what is it, 1750, 1795?
1795.
Has been that fee for a long time.
Yes, sir.
It's paid for out of our senior center budget, they've covered that cost at least for the last 19 years, to add additional days, just like when I said earlier about, you know, when they had, they were able to offer the Wednesday, that was paid for through a grant, they didn't get the grant, so they're unable to offer that Wednesday. So for us to add additional days, there's a cost that goes along with it.
And we're not going to have any other services that'll take the people on Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, if you can't get anything else, then right?
Not at this moment, right this second. I reached out to Catholic charities, which they partner with, because I know that they do that type of stuff, but they work with Tarrant County Transportation Services, so they're kind of, not one in the same, but they work together, one in the same, so.
Okay.
There are a number of other cities that offer transportation services, some of them do it in-house, some of them contract with an organization, but they only do it for that particular city, like for Keller has their own, or North Hurson Hills has their own. So that's, I've been, like I said, I've been waiting since, for some time, to get some information from them, and I haven't received anything, so once I get that, I'll report back to you on that. Right now, this is, the 1795 is just for the one day, which is what we had prior to that grant that they received, but that, it's what we have right now. Can we add it another time? Certainly we can, but I won't know what those prices are, or what those days are until they get back with me.
Okay.
So what this is for, what we're voting on here for is for basically one day a week?
Right.
For senior citizens and stuff that use this service.
That's correct.
So over the last few years, it's a thing that we've offered, how many, how many citizens do we have that actually have utilized it?
I don't have that number, they didn't send that number to me. Like I said, I haven't had much communication with them over the last month, just because, one, trying to find the right person, and two, the person that was supposed to get with me unfortunately passed away, so I don't have that number. Now, I didn't know that, that he passed away until today.
I mean, we don't even know then if two citizens all year last year used this service or not. It sounds like a great service, but...
It's well-used by the seniors at the center, there's a number, quite a few people that do use that, absolutely.
In the past, we've heard a handful every day, but I honestly can give you a number of them.
Well, my concern was a lot of doctors and everything are closing on Mondays and Fridays, you know what I'm saying? So Monday's the only day that they can go, that's, and they need a ride, you know, that's what I'm worried about.
Once I find the right person and I'm able to talk to them about this, in the past, you know, it's always come out of senior center budget. In the past, when Nan was here, she was always the one that did, handled everything, it just came out of our budget. So now I'm getting an opportunity to find the right person and be able to talk to them about others, either, even other days, just like you said.
Okay.
And how do you publicize this? Is it just through the senior citizen center?
We have it through the senior center, she publishes it to her seniors, they get that information, we have it at the rec centers on our website, we published it in newsletters in the past.
I also have a request from Kelly Stewart, you want to speak, ma'am?
Good evening, I'm Kelly Stewart, 404 Mustang Drive, and actually, today I went over and spoke with Kristy about this, because I was not real familiar with it, and she said that 100% she wants this to be part of her budget, and it's line number one for her.
Yes.
Okay? And I asked, other than medical, what can the seniors do? You can, they'll take you to the grocery store, they'll take you to the library, they'll take you to get your haircut, it's not just medical, which, what I, for some reason, had that idea. She has a flyer outside of her door that has all the information, and then she has one of those little, I have it right here, one of the, I took one, the little pull tabs that tells you the days and who to call, and all that kind of stuff, and so it's very organized over there.
Yes.
And I, the other question I had was how else is this publicized, and I got that answer from Keith, but I wanted y'all to know that she just loves this, she loves being part of this, and I don't know if she knew about the Monday only, but she wants to support it 100%, because enough of her people do take, and I might start to give it the benefit of it, because I thought it was strictly doctors.
Oh, no.
And then like one fee, and they'll take you almost anywhere you want to go?
It's $2.50 each way.
Yeah, it's $2.50 there and $2.50 back.
They'll take you to multiple stops, right? And if they do that, and if they run it before?
I would, I don't know how that works.
I think they do, I think if they, I think if they take like a group of them to Wal-Mart's or something, then they might deliver some around Saginaw or something, but I would like to see it available four days a week for our seniors.
Well, sure.
Because not everybody wants to go on Monday or Friday or whatever.
Yeah, well, she said, and it was the Monday.
No, it's a very good service.
Monday, Wednesday, but she was quite positive with it, and it made me positive, so I wanted y'all to vote for it.
Thank you, Kelly. All right, any other questions on F? Yes, any?
And I just, I know that there are a lot of people that are not seniors that use this service as well, so it's not just limited to seniors.
That's correct.
Have we, I'm sorry?
I just said that's correct.
Okay. Have we looked at grants ourselves, we're trying to help with this, instead of relying on a third party to provide a grant?
For us to...
To, I mean, help pay?
Have our, to help pay for our participation within their...
Not the 1795, but the bigger part that the grant covers.
They...
I know you've got nothing else to do, so...
Yeah, that's right. There are grants that are available if you provide a service, to where you can make it cheaper on, to provide that service, like the bus service, or like Catholic charities and some of the other groups that work with individual cities. There's one that does kind of an HEB area, and there's some that do just specific city of, you know, whatever that city is. I went to, I thought it was really strange, because it's a small town, but I was in Red River, New Mexico, back in June or July, and granted, it's a tourist town, but still, they have four buses, not bus like you think bus, but more of a, I don't know, eight-row type bus, and they provide free transportation anywhere throughout town. Now, how they have done that, I don't know. I'm sure they probably have some grants available for that, but it's a city, it's a city staff person, and that's, right now, we're not set up to do that.
But I was just thinking...
Financially or staff?
Because of, correct, but I was thinking, just because of our isolation, we're so far separated from public transportation, maybe that would qualify us for some sort of grant? I don't know if we've ever looked into that, and I guess the other question I have is, what does this cost without the grant, if we were to add the Wednesday? Or do we even know that answer right now?
We don't, that's, that's what I've been waiting on, and they, once, they're a little distraught over the loss of their teammate, so I told her to just, you know, with all due respect, take your time, and she said that she'd get back with me no later than next week, so.
Okay.
Any dollar figures, I wish I had those answers for you, I just, it's kind of beyond our control.
Okay. I mean, there's grants for everything, so it seems like, you know, we could get an isolation grant or something.
Thank you.
Sure.
Are any other questions on item F? For F, if so, if not, I will entertain a motion for F.
Mayor, I make a motion that we approve item F on the agenda, please, as presented.
Any second? Please cast your votes. All right, thank you, folks, thank you, Keith. Item G, consideration action regarding professional service agreement with Cobb, Finley, and Associates to provide utility adjustment coordination services for FM 156 at Industrial. For that, Director of Public Works, Randy Newsom.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. This is a project that y'all are familiar with, if y'all seen it back, when we first started this thing, is to...
To make improvements to Industrial Road over there beside Fuel City, and they're the actual party that started driving this project. It's going to be involving the city of Fort Worth, city of Saginaw, Tarrant County, and maybe Blue Mountain, we're not sure. So the first phase of it, right off the bat, we identified a gas line that was in the way, it's going to cost $600,000 just to move the gas line. Went back to the drawing board and were able to redesign the plans and avoid that gas line. So now then, this item is to pick up the services of Cobb, Finley, to go back in there and identify all of the underground conflicts with any underground utilities in that area for that project. The city is going to, since we're the local sponsor of the project right now, we'll have to foot the bill, but talked to Rick today, and he said that there may be an opportunity somewhere down the line that we could recover some from the other facilities for the cost of this.
That pretty much answered most of my questions. Are we expecting any additional expenses, and how are these items covered in our budget that we approved last week?
Yes. Kim, you can...
The funding, so there were 2020 COs issued, that was originally, 500,000 was earmarked for the signal at Saginaw Boulevard in McElroy, and we found that, we found out after COs were issued that Tech Stop was going to take care of that intersection. So on April, in April of 2021, you as a council reallocated that 500,000 to this intersection project. So far, you've committed about $20,000 to the initial evaluation?
Yeah, the suit.
And so this is coming from that 500,000?
Okay, thank you.
Any questions on G? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I make a motion that we accept the action regarding the professional services with Cobb, Finley, and Associates for the utility adjustment coordination services as presented.
Have a second?
I'll second.
I'll second.
Oh, I'll second.
All right, please cast your votes. Thank you, folks, thank you, Keith, thank you, Randy. All right, moving forward to item number five, at 6:20, we are in a public hearing. Consideration action regarding resolution 2022-22, adoption of revised budget for fiscal year 2021-22. For that, Finance Director, Kim Quinn.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. This is an item that we do, we do our revisions to our budget mid-year and year-end. We're required to make revisions in the same manner in which we adopt the budget, therefore we require the public hearing. This is going to, these adjustments are just going to reflect the year-end actuals, the estimated expense, revenues and expenditures. It also incorporates any changes that y'all have made since the mid-year budget adjustments. And then it also, in addition, is something that's new, that isn't included, or that is in addition to, is the replacement of two mowers, to be proposed to be funded with the savings that we have from the mowing contract. The mowing contractor has not been able to keep up with their mowing frequency, and so there's been a lot of wear and tear on our equipment that is not sufficient to do what we need to do, so we're proposing to use savings to replace some equipment, so the Public Works crews can keep up with that. I don't have any other formal presentation, but you were, you received detailed line item descriptions of the changes, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Counsel, any questions?
I have a couple of them.
Sure, go ahead.
This was a tremendous amount of work, and I love the fact that you spent so much time on the comments section, it made this a lot easier to understand. One thing I didn't pick up on is any mention of the grants that we may be receiving from Tarrant County Precinct 4, for our road projects.
For the Knowles? Are you talking about the Knowles project? That won't, well, we won't receive any of those funds in this fiscal year, right? So we just have a couple weeks left in this fiscal year. But we did receive information here recently that, I don't remember the timing of it, Lee, but sometime after October 1st, we, they will open up the process of reimbursement.
Okay.
So we will, we expect to receive funding, their share of the funding, next fiscal year.
Okay. Do we have any idea how much was awarded to us?
Off the top of my head, I want to say...
It was three-point something.
It was...
I was going to say 4 million.
Yeah.
It's around three and a half million.
And is that the end of our grant that we expect to receive, or are we anticipating extras?
That was the only project that was approved by the Tarrant County Bond.
So have a couple follow-ups, we'll bring a couple items to you probably by the end of the calendar year to do the north section of Old Decatur. Randy and I have talked with Commissioner Johnson's office, so he's going to participate in that, we're very thankful, as well as reconstruction of Wackley Robertson, and then our understanding with the Tarrant County Bond. So every city that submitted their top project was funded, and the top project was determined based on a scoring criteria that they set, ours was Knowles Phase 1 because of the flooding issue, so that's under construction now. We'll submit future phases for consideration, discretionary requests, but by that time, we'll have a new county commissioner, so, you know, we intend to request future phases of our bond projects.
We'll try to get some more money, hopefully we will.
Yeah, and I also, as I was scrolling through here, I noticed that there was a pretty good dip on the number of animal licenses that are registered with the city. Is, do we not have a database or something that helps us send out renewal notices? So we can, you know, try to keep...
So currently, every month, I print out...
Jose, will you come up here, please?
Thank you, sir.
So currently, every month, I print out off our database how many, or everybody that expires for that month, and so, for example, I just printed out for October of this year's registration reminders, okay? I personally sit at my desk and write every one of those out by hand, and then they get mailed out a month ahead of time, or half, you know, like mid-month of September, they get mailed out for October. So everybody receives reminder postcards. Now, whether they heed the warrant, or heed the postcard, or they just toss them off to the side, I can't control that, but they are sent reminder notices, yes.
So our database that we currently use, that's not automated, where it automatically sends it out, and we can't run a report that says, say, and, you know, how many of them did not re-sign, without you having to manually go through and look at each individual one?
So I can go back and find out who has not registered their animals, all the way back to the start of whenever we had that database? I can just plug in some numbers, you know, tell me everybody that has expired tags is that date, depending on the search criteria.
I think he's also talking about a mail merge that will write that for you instead of handwriting.
So you don't have to sit there and write, so you can go chase cats and dogs.
We can help you with that.
With the program that I have currently, there's not one. I'm sure there's some way to do it, to where it'll print out the labels, and we have to put the labels on there, but no, currently, I haven't messed with it enough to figure out how to do that automatically. They do have a way that we can send out email notices, whether people get the email notices or not, because a lot of times, when I email stuff out, it goes to spam folders, so.
Well, and the reason I ask is because I received a card for my daughter and son-in-law for a dog that died 10 years ago, to renew their license.
Unfortunately, citizens are required to notify us when their animals die, or when they move, and they don't do that.
They don't do that, okay.
So.
You sure send them a line?
Yeah.
Thank you, Jose. Our other bunch of questions, folks. All right, so we are in a public hearing, so if anyone from the audience wishes to speak, please come forth. Brent, come on.
Mayor, Council, City Staff, it's always great to see y'all. I just want to extend my sincerest gratitude toward everybody for going through this arduous process of the budget. I really do appreciate it, the transparency, the public hearings, the countless discussions, questions, rocks overturned, I really appreciate y'all, and, you know, being good stewards and making Saginaw a healthy, vibrant city, and even Chief Spears, he offered up to change batteries in our smoke detectors. By the way, I have one chirping in my back bedroom. So I really appreciate it, and thank y'all.
Thank you.
Good to see you, thank you, sir. Any other comments from the audience? All right, then, at 6:29, take us out of the public hearing, and I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the resolution number 2022-22, the revised budget for fiscal year 2021-22.
Have a second? Mayor, you'll second? Please cast your votes. Thanks, Kim, appreciate your hard work. Item number six, consideration regarding recognition for the planning and zoning commission on a request for approval of preliminary plat and a final plat for probably located at tract 119, tract A, James A. Vow survey. For that, we've got Susie.
Hey, Mr. Mayor and Council, good afternoon, everyone. So before you, you have a preliminary and final plat for Falcon Distribution Center, located at 361 and 345 East McElroy. These plats... These plots are the final component for their civil plan approval, and the DRC Committee has reviewed the plans, and staff is recommending approval. Today, we have Mr. Matt Bocky, if y'all have any questions in regards to the plat specifically.
Did you say 361, and what was the other?
345.
Because on our, on our information, it says 451.
451, I'm sorry.
I went and looked at that, and that is-
Flipped the numbers around.
So, that confused me.
Yes.
So, why would it have that address on there, or something that already exists?
It's just two parcels, two separate parcels, so they're addressed differently.
Because one of them is that 55-plus development, that senior apartments is 451 McElroy. So, how could it be part of, what is the name of that? I forgot the name of that. Mariposa. That is the address on the sign of Mariposa is 451 East McElroy, and that's what confused me, like, what are they gonna do in the parking lot or something?
I think per TAD, it may be that, but I can definitely verify that. I do apologize.
So, I didn't know if that would make a difference.
Yeah. It's two parcels, though. I think that's what showed up on TAD, but TAD isn't always the most correct, so.
Okay, and it won't make a difference in the legality of it.
So, how can we approve it without the right address?
We noticed it per tract, not per address.
Okay.
So, I do apologize.
What is going in here?
It's a distribution center.
So, we're talking about a massive building.
If you have questions regarding the specifics of the building, Mr. Matt can answer those.
Do you want to come up? Sorry, don't want to take all the blame.
Good evening, Mayor and Counsel. Matt Bocky with GM Civil, civil engineer on the project. Your question is about the facility that's gonna be built?
Yes.
I believe it's a 380,000 square foot building. I don't have the site plan here in front of me, but it's a single building, speculative at this point in time. There's, the tenant hasn't been decided yet, but it'll, it'll be a warehouse-type facility.
Okay. So, it looks like, if I'm reading this drawing correctly, it, it looks like you're gonna be using, what's that road, Spring Hollow Drive, to access this property?
Yes, ma'am.
Is there a way that you can access this property off of McElroy? Because, you know, running those big heavy equipment, because you're talking a massive building, because I think it says 1.67, 1,679,000 square feet.
Yeah, so, the answer is, there's not a way to access directly to McElroy. That's something that was considered when we went through the site plan process and the construction plan review. The driveway separation there at McElroy, it would actually likely create more traffic problems than it would, would help. So, one of the things that is included in our construction plans is to actually remove and replace the concrete pavement on Spring Hollow up to the point of the entrance to provide better roadway.
Before or after the project is completed?
Before.
What about after? If it needs it?
It, it's a public roadway at that point, so it falls under the city's maintenance long-term.
Is this city, I mean, is this intersection designed for this type of traffic?
It's what they're proposing, like-
How tall is this building gonna be?
I believe it's a 32-foot-high building.
Okay, I looked at Google Maps, and I saw there's a lot of trees on the property line.
On the, on the north side?
I guess those are coming down. On the east side?
On the east side.
Next to Spring Hollow Drive?
Only the trees that would be required to be removed for the roadway. We're not clearing, you know, the entire property. It would be the, the area that needs to be cleared to physically install the roadway and the utilities.
Mm-hmm. And I know that, from what I read, that Planning and Zoning said, we've got a rep here from Planning and Zoning, correct? That it fits the property, or the zoning description?
I'm sorry, Chief Engineer?
I said this facility fits the zoning. Okay. I'm just, when I looked at this, I was a little concerned about the approach off of city property, I mean, off of city roads onto your property.
Understand.
And what sort of traffic congestion that's gonna create on Spring Hollow.
Yeah, and, and your staff did a great job of asking these same types of questions. We went through all those discussions with them to, to get to this point with the, the site plan and, and the, the construction documents. The, the case that we've got tonight is, is actually just for the plat, so it's a preliminary and final plat that has been determined to meet city requirements.
Mm-hmm. I know, but this is step one. I also noticed-
Mayor and Counsel, if I may interject, so the property is already zoned for light industrial use, so, once it's platted, it meets the technical requirements. Bren is due for his reliable jingle about plats. Plats require approval when they meet requirements, so I'll defer to Bren.
Well, and I recognize that. That's, but there were still some questions, you know, that I had. I am curious, because I was always reading through the minutes for Planning and Zoning, Mr. Wooton, I think you were the only one that was against this. Is it okay if we ask him why? I mean-
Absolutely, but again, when a plat meets technical requirements, it has to be approved. So, you're not negotiating land use decisions. That was decided 30 years ago when this property was owned by industrial. Why it didn't develop until 2022, I don't know, but we're not talking about the land use. We're talking about a plat.
I think what they're worried about is the residential street on Spring Hollow. That's what I think. I'm not for sure, but that's what I-
Certainly understand the concern, but the property owner has rights, and the city cannot legally inhibit the property owner from developing their property, so.
Are, are we, we're worried about the traffic it may, may bring, the big traffic?
I'm worried about the traffic. I'm worried about the wear and tear on the roadways.
Okay.
Because that's not part of the plat.
Okay.
Spring Hollow is city property, and I understand they said they were gonna beef it up before, but still a concern.
So, so, what, what about the traffic? I mean, I'm assuming these will be semi-trucks, so, coming out of there, what's, is, is the city done a survey? What do we need to do to make sure that this isn't gonna cause a congestion problem?
Nice. So, in regards to the traffic and all of those details, the Development Review Committee does consist of our city engineer, so they have reviewed those stats that Falcon Distribution Center has provided, and so that has already been accounted for. And so, that's what Matt was referring to. They're gonna just repave that road, and no other route is necessary because it's going to account for the current and upcoming traffic.
Yeah, I'm, I'm good with the repaving the road. That answers the, the beefing up the road for the wear and tear on the road, but it still doesn't answer. If we've done that survey, then we should know, have an estimate on how many vehicles per day's gonna be coming out.
The traffic impact analysis.
I'm just inter, I'm, what I'm really, I'm sitting here, and I looked at this, when those trucks, our cars leave, and they hit a major artery going left or right, you know, is the turn signals correct? Are we gonna have to, are we gonna have to update those? Or are we gonna wait till it gets built, and all of a sudden our, our citizens start screaming, and then we come back and have to fix it?
I don't, I don't have the TIA in front of me, but all of that was taken into account. I, I know during the peak hour, I remember the peak hour was actually pretty low for this development, but they didn't just look at the intersections of Spring Hollow, they are, they also looked at adjacent intersections to look at the impact.
Okay. So, there'll be, there'll be no issue there?
Not that I-
We won't have to update any of our intersections or anything? Should be able to handle it?
Yeah, I think this land use would actually be surprisingly low impact to nearby intersections.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Any other que, any other questions, Counsel? Thank you, Susie. All right, if not, I will entertain a motion. Item number six.
Mayor, I move that we accept the recommendation from the Parks and Zoning Commission on the approval of the plat and final, or, and, from this, final plat for the property located adjacent to 119 Track One and 1F03 and Lot 16A out to Edgar Kerr subdivision located at 361 and 451 East McElroy Boulevard.
Do you have a second? Paul second. Please cast your votes. Most passes. Thank you, folks. Item number seven, at 6:41, we are in a public hearing. Consideration of Action Regarding the Recognition and Planning of the Commission on Request for Specific Use Permit to Allow the Operation of Auto Impound Lot Rucker Business on Property Located Aspect 345, Track 2X2N, with David Cook Survey. Keep the 100 Blue Mountain Road for that. Susie Victor Trevino.
So, Mr. Mayor and Counsel, so this is in regards to the property located at 200 South Blue Mountain Road, and the applicant is Mr. Beciso, and he is here to answer any of the questions that you may have in terms of his SUP application. But just to give y'all a little bit of background, this property is zoned heavy industrial, and so this does require, allow an SUP for an auto impound slash rucking business, which is what you would be voting on today. Just want to add, the business itself currently is an auto repair shop, so his vision is to add in the back an additional building, which would be the auto impound. In his application, he does answer the 13 questions that are required per ordinance, and we went ahead and included the site plan, but I just wanted to let y'all know, the site plan has not been formally reviewed. This is just the SUP aspects, but he is going to be implementing an eight-foot fence, so we are going to recommend approval pending the eight-foot fence construction on there. And I do want to add that we did receive some opposition letters in regards to this property, and we do have someone who is neighboring within the 200-foot radius. I have a representative here for that property, and so they were able to discuss that with one another, the applicant and the neighboring owner, and so it's mentioned that they have some conditions that they wanted to implement as well to the approval, so that they could- Mr. Randall, did you want to formally say some of those conditions? But in order to withdraw their opposition, this is what they're recommending, and that is that email edition that I gave everyone, so this is what we received today, so I just wanted to let everyone know. But, Mr. Randall, if you could present yourself and discuss this, and then Mr. Beciso can confirm that he is in agreement, so, just so that y'all have that information verbally as well.
Now, there was more than one opposition, right?
So, Mr. Gary and Mr. Randall are both owners of the same property.
Okay.
And then there was one more, but he was not within the 200-foot radius, so the 200-foot radius, if there, I think you said, more than 20% ownership?
Yeah, that's right. So, essentially what happens is if you have the owner of more than 20% of property within 200 feet of the subject zoning property, if a written protest is submitted, it triggers a supermajority vote requirement in order for Counsel to approve it. So, that's 75%, so it's actually five and a quarter Council members, which, which makes it six, unfortunately, but, so, that individual's not here this evening to formally withdraw it, but I understand his partner is here to just sort of discuss his new support for the application, so it wouldn't formally withdraw the protest, it'd still trigger the supermajority, but for all intents and purposes, my understanding is that the concerns have been alleviated so long as these conditions are added to the SUP, which you have the right to do in your motion.
Mr. Randall.
My name's Randall Johnson. I'm a partner with Gary Habner in regards to the Saginaw Business, Business Park, which is seven industrial buildings next to Lionel's property, the applicant. Gary met with Lionel this morning, and I think he had the copy of the email, and we've agreed that if, if he's okay with these conditions of adding the fence further than what he originally added at, and then painting it to match the new building that he's planning on building, that we do, we do not oppose this SUP.
Thanks, sir. Appreciate it. All right, so the two conditions I see are install a eight-foot white or gray arpenel fence, and paint the back building white or gray matching the sand gray exterior.
And then remove-
That's only two, right?
What about remove the current dilapidated pits?
Okay.
I think there's thirty.
So, there's three? Okay.
Doesn't say three on the bottom, but I guess that's fair.
So, I mean, I got some concerns. I mean, one, I've never seen a nice-looking junkyard or impound lot. I've been to a few, and they're always rough. And they put a fence up, I've seen the fences after a few years, they get dents in them where they push them against the cars, the car, some cars set there a long time, you know, it, it just attracts riffraff. It, I've never seen an impound lot in a nice neighborhood, let's just state that. And this is just right down from what used to be Har- what we used to call years ago Harold's, a gas station's over off the left. I'll say that, back behind it where it was, I seen that they cleaned up that auto repair shop, because there used to be a bunch of junk cars in there. When I drove by there, it's on the right-hand side, and I seen that about a month ago, it's cleaned up. I go, oh, wow, they finally got that garbage cleaned up. Maybe something nice will move in. I just, I look at this, and I, I would cringe if this was next to my house, or anywhere close to where I was going to live, an impound lot, so, I mean, there's not enough information here, I mean, one, to make sure that, that this is kept up to a very nice standard. I don't know, I mean, the, like I said, I've seen all of them, I mean, not just us, but other states that has, like, like, like I say, impound lots or junk cars, and they say they have to have an eight-foot fence around them after a few years. The fence get tore up, get holes knocked in them, they look bad, grass is growing up between them, like I said. And that's not even talking the environmental issues, that, you know, these cars sit there sometimes for a long time, they leak fluids, things like that, so, I just, it doesn't seem like it, it's something that, you know, in the direction we're wanting to go.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to point out that there is no residential area in this. This is all heavy industrial, so in general, the heavy industrial is going to look a little bit more towards these types of oriented businesses. And I would like to also add that currently, the business is not aesthetically pleasing, but after speaking and viewing some of Mr. Beciso's plans, I can confidently say that it is going to be very much cleaned up, and I don't know if Mr. Beciso wants to add something to that, since it's his business.
Yeah, I mean, I, I'd have to reach, before I get behind this, I'd have to reach out there and figure out exactly how we get this written up to make sure that it is of a respectable design, and it'll look nice, and we put some teeth behind it to make absolutely sure that the city can enforce that, okay?
Mr. Mayor, Counsel, thank you. I'm gonna have, have a hat out.
Thank you, sir.
I agree with you, Mr. Lawson, most wrecking yards.
You introduce yourself, please, sir.
I'm sorry, Lionel Beciso, 200 South Blue Mountain Road.
Thank you.
Uh, I agree with you, most wrecking yards are deplorable. Let, let me correct, this is not going to be a wrecking yard, it's only going to be an impound. We're currently operating our automotive business, Lamy Fleet Services, out of the back building. The back building is not attractive. All of the property in front of that building is concrete, which is one thing that really appealed to me for the property to be an impound, because there will be no grass, nothing like that. Impounds are heavily regulated by TDLR, so we have tons of rules that we have to abide by through TDLR, or it's easily $10,000 fines for anything that's not in compliance.
What's TDLR?
TDLR is Texas Department of Licensing and Regulation.
Thank you.
If you'll look at the site plan, it'll have a brand-new building at the front that will be Austin limestone front, and this eight-foot trimmed R-panel fence will encompass all of the impound. So, you see, there's only two parking spaces for the impound, because everything that we use for the towing business, and every vehicle that we work for the Lamy Fleet Services in the back will be hidden in this eight-foot tall fence. I'm a retired retail auto center manager for Sears for 20 years. I want a beautiful facility, because that attracts good clientele. I'm a very picky man, and I promise you, this property will not look like garbage. I hope, I hope any of you have been able to drive by there in the past three weeks. We've cleaned off everything in front of the building, there's absolutely nothing in front of the building.
Yeah, that's what I was saying, I drove, I actually lived not too far from that.
Okay, yeah, 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 believe me, I want to make this a beautiful facility. And just the fact that I met with Mr. Havner today, look at his gorgeous facility, and if I was able to prove to him that this is gonna be beauty and not an eyesore, I mean, I think that should say a lot.
What is this right here that says Masonary Stone Front, is that the front of the new building?
Yes, front of the new building. So, what I'm trying to do is completely hide the existing building from the, from the view of the road. All you'll see is that new stone-front building and a beautiful trimmed R-panel fence. It will be trimmed, level, it's not gonna be one of those, it's gonna be a gorgeous fence. And I invite you to look at my website, talk to my tow truck drivers, I'm a very picky man. If, if something gets scratched, something gets dented, it's replaced.
What's your website, please?
It's, it's L.I.O.M.E.E. properties.com.
All right, so you agree to these three points that we discussed?
Absolutely, yes.
Do we need to put that in?
We will put that in the motion.
But, uh, what sort of revenue would we expect to benefit this city?
From the towing business, or from both businesses?
Whatever it is that you plan to put in.
Uh, well, the automotive business is already there.
Right. So, towing and wrecking?
I'm sorry?
Towing and wrecking, I guess?
Well, it's not wrecking, there's no, it's, it's just impound, which is different.
Okay.
The towing business right now is on pace to do, right at a million dollars this year.
That's what you bring in for yourself?
That's what the business gross sales are.
Okay.
And that's without an impound, and having an impound makes the business more profitable.
And we have, and we get revenue off of that, correct?
Sales tax.
Sales tax?
Yes.
And how many vehicles would you be able to store at this facility?
We're still working with the fire department on the fire lane, but if the fire lane has to be as it's drawn, then we can only fit about 20, maybe 25 cars in there.
What's the, what's the longest time, average time the car sit there before they're?
Most cars are picked up within a matter of one to two days. Uh, if you have an insurance vehicle, something like that, that may be involved in a lawsuit, it could sit in there for a year. But we are partnered already with another impound that we currently take our vehicles to, so once this lot gets to capacity, we'll just type vehicles to the other lot.
I know that, and nothing personal, please, um, just from my experiences, it seems like there's a little higher crime rate, you know, in these areas, people trying to get their cars back or whatever, I don't know. Can, Chief, are you anticipating any additional problems in that area because of this business coming in?
So, my prior agency, we actually had a towing service that was there in town, and occasional break-in, somebody trying to steal a stereo or something like that, but it, there wasn't a significant increase in crime by any means. That facility also had a, a R-panel fence around it to secure the property, which really alleviates a lot of your break-ins. Those fences are a little bit harder to scale, so.
Okay, thank you.
And you probably have cameras and everything out there, right?
Yes, we've already installed cameras on the existing building, and then when the new building goes in, it'll have, you'll wanna have that for liability.
So, my next question is, I, I see these, I'm okay with these, but again, I'm looking into the future, five years from now, I know you say you wanna keep your place really nice and everything, but let's say somebody comes in and buys you out, the next guy may not be as nice. How do we put in here to make absolutely sure that that fence is kept up, kept nice in the front and beside it? I'd, I'd really like to see something added to this, and I'm.
Right, I mean, so, so you could include maintenance and upkeep obligations for the fence?
Yeah.
I'm hardly an expert, so I don't know how frequently.
Yeah, how do you quantify that?
Painted, and, yeah, so you, we would just need to quantify it, though.
Yeah, right, yeah, that's where we need, that's where we need Mr. Little. But I, that's what's got me concerned, because I have been to impound lots and things like that, and the fences do get pretty, pretty ratty, and usually the front and the side, a lot of the buildings aren't, aren't that nice.
You could require landscaping, I, I don't know what the site looks like, I mean, landscaping.
Yeah, I don't, I know even, even like our fence, it can't be a, that you guys actually put in there, that has to be within so much percent, and it can't be leaning over by a certain level, but we, we need something in here to where, uh, you know, it's, it's kept up. Yeah, that, you know, the, the fence can be put up, it can be really nice today, but five years from now, if no maintenance is done on it, it can look pretty ratty, and then we start complaining, and they go, oh, well, there's no, there's no ordinance or anything, you know.
Well, technically, wouldn't that go into code enforcement, just a question?
That's correct, yeah, we have minimum property standards that apply to residential and commercial properties, so if it didn't meet adopted minimum property standards.
So, if you see it, all you have to do is call Larry Little?
Code enforcement, yeah.
So, how bad can the fence be before, and how bad can it look before? I mean, again, I've seen some pretty rough fences around, again, around, around these type of.
I, I think I understand the concern, uh, become somewhat subjective, you know, define bad, and, you know, um, yeah.
I'm pretty sure most of the commercial, well, most that I've seen around Saginaw's been pretty good, now some of the residential, I don't know if they can afford it or not.
Yeah, like I say, I haven't seen any other impound lots in Saginaw, but I have seen them in other cities and stuff, and, and they're always pretty rough.
My thing would be if you see something, call, call Larry Little. If Larry's not there, Randy, Randy will get hold of Larry for you.
Well, I'm just trying to come up with a way to get me to support this, and then let, I mean, again, call Larry Little, and then I know exactly what's gonna happen. I'm gonna get told, well, you know, they're within the rules, or it's a gray area. I'm, I've, I've learnt twice, been on this council last year, now's the time to, to lock it down, and that's where you see me looking at you and say, okay, how, how do we fix this?
Yeah, so, absolutely, I mean, we need some empirical standards, um, so I'm, I'm happy to prepare them, but I, candidly, I, I'm not qualified to, to comment on what the regular maintain, maintenance schedule would be for a fence.
Well, maybe we can just put in there if it keeps it up to code or ordinance, so that.
Yeah, couldn't we do that, that the fence must be kept aesthetically pleasing, and?
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's gonna be difficult to enforce, so you get, you've got the aesthetic standards, and you've got the structural integrity of the fence. I think code enforcement would certainly consider, you know, looking at the fence if it was, if there was a structural integrity problem, if it was gonna fall, if it was tilting, et cetera, but I don't think code enforcement is gonna write a ticket for faded paint.
He's exactly right, that's what I was gonna say, there are ordinances in place to keep the fence looking good, but when you're talking about paint, that, that's really subjective, so you can't hold somebody to that. Yeah, so, I mean, let, let's say it starts rusting, or a couple of panels come loose, you know, and you get the holes in it.
That's enforceable today.
That's already in our code?
Yes, it is. I think the only thing that can tell you how much to paint is HOA, as far as I know, in the city of Saginaw.
What do you mean?
He will break in.
He will break in.
He wants to keep it secure, in his best interest, he's very incentivized to keep it nice.
The, none of ours, but the profitable, to un, to keep, the fence looking good and things like that, this is an impound lot, it's not gonna, the people who's getting usually pulled their stuff in there, they're not making a choice where their car goes.
Well, but remember, sir, I have the automotive business in the back, that's much, much more profitable than the impound.
Okay.
The, my customers in the back have to drive past this front property to get to my back business, so I absolutely have an interest in it looking beautiful all the way to my shop.
I'd remind folks, this is heavy industrial, it's own heavy industrial, this is a, this is a heavy industrial plat project.
And, and I did my due diligence, before I bought the property, I met with the city, we had a pre-development meeting with the site plan, it was 100% positive feedback. I have pictures of the current building, if you wanna see it. If, if this were to get denied, we're all stuck looking at the building that's there, and none of us wanna see the building that's there, we wanna hide it, so that's, you know, that's my case.
So, that building is gonna be painted?
Yes, we're painting, we're painting it exactly the same color as the new building and fence.
Good.
And the R-panel fence that we're installing is brand-new R-panel, it will not be used or seconds, so, I mean, just the paint quality on that metal's guaranteed for 40 years anyway.
Yeah, is it powder-coated or painted?
Probably powder-coated.
Don't know that. It's, it's a guaranteed 40-year product, R-panel, it's the same material that's being used to build the new building.
Mayor, do you have a question?
Um, I just wanted to say, when I first saw this in our packet, I was a little bit concerned because there were objections, but then when I saw this email and saw that the adjacent property owner and you have come to an agreement, it will be a significant improvement in the looks.
Yes.
Of the building, um, and, you know, I don't think we have a right to say to people who come forward, well, are you gonna keep this looking nice for the rest of your life? I mean, we don't ask, you know, we have code enforcement, we have rules in place to take care of that kind of thing, so I think it's a win-win, actually.
Yes.
So, I would be in favor of it.
Thank you.
Oh, and by the way, he does not have to use stone, but he's willing to do so.
Yes.
And that will be quite an improvement.
That's a good point.
We don't have the authority to require that.
Right, right.
And Austin's.
So, that's a big improvement.
Actually, we do on SUP, don't we? We can say all kinds of stuff on SUP, Masonry.
Well, within limitations, so, if we're talking about, so, I, I don't have the email in front of me, I'm sorry, so we can't, we can't regulate building materials, but if it's fencing materials, we can.
Okay, okay.
All right, any other questions, folks?
Yes, I got one.
I didn't realize that.
Chief, besides the, um, fire lane, is there any other concerns from the fire department? With storing these vehicles or anything?
No, sir, formal plans haven't been submitted, but everything that has the renderings and discussions and what he's brought forward, no other concerns, he can meet all the codes and ordinances.
Any other questions for Mr. Beciso?
Beciso.
Beciso, sorry. All right, thanks, sir.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing still, so if anyone in the audience has any questions or comments, now is the time to come forth. Then at 7:04, we'll take us out of a public hearing, and I will entertain a motion.
Mayor, I make a motion that we approve this SUP with the following, he has to have the eight-foot wide or gray R-panel fence, he has to paint the back building white or gray to match it, and then he has to remove the dilapidated current fence and the guardrail running along the south of the property.
Everybody good with that? Do I have a second? Mayor, second? Folks, cast your votes. Thank you for working with us, I appreciate that, sir, thank you all, that's how it's supposed to work. All right, moving on, item number, so, we are, just for the public's notice, we are canceling every item that is parks-related, since the parks board canceled their meeting, so we will skip eight, nine, and 10, and also 13, so we're moving to 11. Item 11, consideration action regarding professional service agreement proposed by Animal Arts Studio by Design Services for a new animal shelter, for that, Assistant City Manager Lee Howe.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. Um, back in July, council gave us direction to explore the, the design services and needs assessment for a potential new animal shelter. So, I did a lot of research on trying to find the perfect architect firm for this project, and I think we've come up with a really good one, it's called Animal Arts Design Studios. Their home office is in Boulder, Colorado, they're licensed to, or they hold architectural license in 34 states in the country, in the United States, the District of Columbia and Canada, and their portfolio includes over a thousand collaborations with animal shelters all over the country. Spoke several times with the principal architect, Heather Lewis, who, um, kind of went back and forth with her with a number of phone calls and a couple of Zoom meetings, and negotiated a proposal with her where she has given us sort of an all-out cart proposal based on how far we want her to go with, with the assessment. The basic assessment would include, of course, the facility needs, a site assessment, a recommendation of program spaces with options, some cost estimating, a summary of that cost with some costing options, a preliminary design plan, a floor plan recommendation, and analysis, most, probably most importantly, an analysis of the capacity requirements needed to specifically serve the citizens of Saginaw and their animals. So, um, taking a look at some of her other projects, she was, last year, was in, involved in collaboration with a brand-new facility in Fort Worth, which she comes highly recommended by them, that's the Chuck and Brenda Silcox Animal Care and Adoption Center on Martin Street in Fort Worth. She's also currently involved in the Austin Pets Alive, uh, design phase, they're doing the complete architectural design for that facility, which is a nonprofit organization that operates a major, uh, animal shelter in, in Adoption Center in Austin. So, um, I would, my recommendation is that, that this is probably the, one of the most, uh, one of the premier, uh, firms that fits the, the unique, uh, animal shelter, care facility, design services that we need, and I think they would do us a good job, I'd recommend approval.
Counsel, questions?
Yeah, I had, I had one, one, I, I looked over all this stuff, it's very impressive. I did have one question, I did send it in, I didn't get an answer, I just, I was curious on why they had an option where if they could, they could help us do fundraising, and that was like $25,000, and I was just wondering, what, do we have any idea, why, is it just the, the amount of human resources it takes to do fundraising, or?
Yeah, so, so that would be some very detailed floor plans beyond what's in, in the assessment report, it would be very specific, it would also include, um, complete 3D renderings that we could use as, you know, a showcase for a fundraising effort. And, and that is, in fact, probably the most expensive single item on that, on that venue. Uh, but it would go way beyond what the, what the needs assessment would include.
Yeah, so it's a lot more than just doing fundraising, then you're actually doing 3D, the rendering and all of that there.
Yes.
Gotcha.
And, so, you know, and the way the proposal is written, we can, like I said, we can, we can stop at any point in there, um, the, she's also presented it to where it would, it would be in effect for a year, um, and, of course, they, they provide full architectural services from start to finish, if we wanted to go that far with that firm.
So, how far are you all recommending? So, how far are you all recommending we go?
I would suggest that we start with the needs assessment, the, the stakeholder meetings, the in-person council meeting, uh, and then, at that point, we'll get a report, and then we'll have, we'll be able probably to come back and see where y'all want to go with that. It, um, this lady, Ms. Lewis, has been involved in a number of, of, uh, those detailed fundraising-type design projects. So, um, you know, if we wanted to go there and we're, we're serious about funding, uh, a shelter and looking for donations to help fund that, right, in fundraising, I think it, that would be a great next step, and this would be a good, uh, service to get from them.
Questions? Go ahead.
I had a similar question, uh, to Nick about the fundraising drawings. Uh, I'm presuming that, uh, your principal architect is going to be involved in these fundraisings, and we can more than make our money back than the twenty-five thousand dollars that we would have to spend?
Yeah, there, there's no guarantee of that, but I would assume that's probably the case. Um, I did ask her specifically, and this is a large firm, it being sort of a niche firm, but they do operate all over the country at, you know, multiple locations, they have about fifty, uh, staff in their firm, which is fairly significant. Um, I did ask her, if this, within this proposal, do we get her or someone else with her? And she said, "I don't know," she says she'll be personally involved in.
And I was looking at some of the, um, other facilities that she had been, she had designed, been, been part of their construction. I don't think we need anything nearly that big or nearly that elaborate, I mean, are they willing to handle something as small as what we need for Saginaw?
Yes, absolutely, yeah, so, I went over that with her extensively, about the, the size of the city, and our, the estimation of some of our stats, um, that Animal Services handles now. Of course, she'll do, she'll start collecting stats from us, if you approve this, that'll be one of the first steps. Um, she's very aware that the facility is not, um, you know, nineteen or twenty thousand square feet, that it's going to be considerably smaller than that. Uh, and I've talked to her briefly about the actual site that, where, where we have the shelter now, and if that's like a likely site for a new shelter. So she's aware of the size limitations that we have on it.
Yeah, I think part, when I read that, part of it was they would look at kind of our input that we're currently getting and stuff, and then they would say, "Well, this is the size of building you need to manage, what you got, right?"
Yes, that's correct.
Yeah, that's good.
Yeah, we had an extensive conversation about making sure that we didn't overbuild it to accommodate Fort Worth, you know, so.
Well, you know, my concern is, we build a beautiful new animal facility, whatever size, in a month it's going to be full because of irresponsible pet owners.
Yep.
And that's, and the city gets blamed for that.
Yep.
We've got to handle all of that, that's my biggest concern, we're at, we're busting at the seams right now, I realize that, we need to do something. I just, well, I, I wish there was a way we could address the other part. While, while these dogs don't get vaccinated, or don't get, you know, fixed and everything else, and irresponsible dog owners and all that.
And cats.
Cats, you're right, cats, too.
No, I mean, they get, they're irresponsible, too, they're bad.
No, so, that's my only concern with this project, I think we need one, we need to see how much and what size, so I think it's a great start. Other questions, council?
Yeah, one more, is, is this in our budget for next year?
No, it's not in our budget, but we would, we've identified, uh, the use of some ARPA funds to pay for this assessment.
Good news. Uh, the questions, council?
When you die, I'm an architect.
All right, no other questions, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move that we proceed forward with the professional, uh, service agreement, uh, to, for the, uh, Animal Arts Studio.
Charlie Stecker, please cast your votes. Thank you, folks, thank you, Lee, appreciate the hard work. Uh, item number twelve, update on two thousand twenty-two strategic project list and work plan, reestablishing a chamber of commerce for that director of community and economic development, Keith Reinhardt.
Thank you, Mayor and council, give me a second to get set up, I'm juggling. While I'm waiting for this to pop up, um, back at March fifteenth, the, the council approved a resolution two thousand twenty-two oh seven, it adopted the work plan for the city, gives direction to city manager, uh, to lead staff towards the, the projects that were identified. Uh, one of the items that were identified was reestablish, reestablishing a chamber of commerce. Sorry, hold on. Over the past nine months, I've been investigating, um, different options for, for the city, um, trying to look at, um, what's the best way to best serve our business community. Um, there were some issues, the way that the previous chamber was set up and, and working, which I'll address in just a few minutes. Um, so I looked at different options. Um, it's always good to have options as opposed to just one thing, so. Uh, the options I looked at were, number one, starting a chamber from scratch, which I'll, I'll detail a little bit more in just a minute. The other option was joining another established chamber of commerce. And the third option was forming a pilot chamber with Tarrant County College Northwest.
Just covered that, how about that?
First option was, uh, forming a pilot chamber with Tarrant County College. Um, back in February, Mayor Flippo, Gabe and myself met, uh, with Tarrant County Administration about possibly forming a chamber. Nothing was worked out, no details or, or anything was decided, but it was determined that, um, for our area, we certainly need, uh, something, a, a chamber of commerce. Our chamber of commerce folded, uh, about two, three, about three years ago, for multiple reasons, and not too terribly long after that, the Northwest Chamber also folded. And right now, we have none. Uh, the, the option, uh, some of the pros and cons of this, I'll try and zoom in as best I can, hold on. Uh, some of the pros of, of forming a chamber with a pilot chamber with Tarrant County College is we would have our own chamber, probably have our name on it, similar to what we had before. Um, not sure, because no details were worked out at that meeting, um, but it could possibly be managed by the students of Tarrant County College. I'll move on to the cons. Um, the Chamber of Commerce is not a municipal government organization, they're not run by municipalities, they're just not. Uh, they're also not managed and run by chambers of commerce either, they're, they're put on by the business community. You know, the questions, some of the questions we have, you know, building a chamber from scratch is, is, well, things are done, you're putting your staff in a really bad situation, and in a sense, you're setting staff up to fail because you're putting us in a political situation of select, hand-selecting, um, people to be on that executive board for the chamber, and it puts staff in a bad spot. Um, the cost of starting a chamber, um, from scratch is, is going to be pretty significant, you're looking at about two hundred and fifty thousand to five hundred thousand, depends on, depends on staff, depends on the programs you want to be offered. Um, looking at, at a minimum, one of the things that killed the, the chamber, which I'll talk about in a minute, was, um, they didn't have the staff. They had, um, at one time, they had a, for the first five years that I was involved in here, they did really well, but the city grew, um, and they, when they had eight thousand, ten thousand people, having one full-time employee and, and a few part-time, that was, it worked. It's just that we're at twenty-five thousand people right now. Um, and looking at, the, one of the difficulties they had over the past several years that they were in operations, they just had one full-time employee, and they could never leave. If they did, and people came by the office and they said, "Boy, you're not there, your doors are always locked." Well, they can't get out in the community. So looking at, um, an executive director, um, minimum of one executive director, a minimum of one marketing membership coordinator, every chamber has that, and they have it for a reason, and then have a minimum of one part-time assist, uh, assistant. Uh, that two hundred and fifty to five hundred includes rent, electrical, water, phone, internet, events, programs, consultants, training for staff, et cetera. Board members, who's going to select them? Putting staff in that position is, that's, that's a political suicide for us. Who's going to draft the bylaws and standard operating procedures for that? The quick, easy answer is, you, you, you carve and copy another chamber and get your ideas from that. Actually, several years, I was, I was on the chamber board for about fifteen years, and as the chamber was moving in a wrong direction, I drafted a new set of bylaws because it was very outdated, and, um, it didn't reflect what the chamber was at that moment. So I, I drafted the whole new set of bylaws for the chamber, which they adopted. Uh, they didn't necessarily follow them, but they adopted them. Location, where are we going to put them? Where are they going to be housed, and who's going to pay for it? Uh, programs and events, who's going to establish their programs? Who's going to fund the programs? Part of that is, part of that two hundred and fifty thousand, five hundred thousand dollars. And return on, in, uh, your investment, uh, the city of Saginaw nor the, North Tarrant County College will ever receive their, their seed money back. They'll never get that money back, because there's no, the chambers are not put in place to be significant revenue-producing. Um, and, and any revenue that they do produce should be put back towards the businesses, not, uh, putting back in your, your coffers and your bank accounts and, and paying the city. Option number two.
Before we move, move on, Keith.
Sure.
So, you know, when we talked to the Tarrant County College folks, they said they would, we could house in their facility. And they showed us they have space, uh, they're renovating the whole, so they have space we could use, I think with no cost. We also considered, uh, partnering with Lake Worth, the city of Lake Worth, our friends over there. I talked to Walter briefly, and he would be amenable to discussions, of course, nothing has happened, but. Uh, so there are options besides just what's listed here, I think this is a little bit, I mean, this is tilted way toward the cons area, and I think this is a better option than, than this list makes it. Um, dollar-wise, that's something we need to look at. Uh, I think a partnership with D C C would, has some positives because they've got students, uh, as manpower that would, would want to do at least some work as part of their schooling, their scholastic stuff, get credit, get things like that, so. There's some positive there, and the, the, Tarrant County College is a great, uh, community member, so they would be a partner as well, and they would help, uh, some of this, so. I'm not as con toward this option as, as is listed on this, um, thing, and because I've talked to them as well. So that's, I just want to give that input to the council, I think this is a option we could at least consider and talk more about. I think there's a lot of details, that would need to be worked out, of course, but, um.
One of the reasons there's been as many pros is because we never decided on really anything, there was nothing in place. We, we met back in February, so I don't have a whole lot of, a lot of cons, because we haven't had a lot of discussion since then.
So on this one, it's two hundred and fifty to five hundred thousand to start it up, to do it, that's with the Tarrant County. I went and looked at option three, which is, we do our own, it doesn't have a dollar amount, but I, I remember in one of the earlier ones, we said to start one from scratch would be two hundred and fifty to five hundred thousand. So we don't see any advantages of teaming up with, uh, Tarrant County College versus just doing our own?
You can, there's just, there's just a lot of, we don't have a lot of answers. Um, there's a lot of questions, and we just don't have a lot of answers yet. One of the things that, which I'll, I'll get to in, in, in just a second, I think it's, uh, actually, it's the next one, was, um, the biggest complaint in the fifteen years that I was involved in the chambers, that the chamber didn't provide anything for them, for the business community. The businesses constantly, they said, "All you do is ask for our money, you ask for our sponsorship money, you ask for us to be members, but we're not getting anything in return." And with the funding that they had and the revenues that they brought in, which was very minimal, um, it made it difficult for them to do that, it made it very difficult for them to start, they, they became, they went from being a business-oriented, uh, chamber, which is what it should be, to an event planner. And the reason they kept putting on more and more and more and more adventures to try and make money, the problem was it wasn't making any money. The only event that was making any money was Run the Rails, and that was managed by me. Everything else that they did pretty much lost money. The, they weren't able to hire staff because they didn't make enough money, or, or qualified staff that had experience. They hired, they did hire some people from the community, uh, to be the executive director, uh, but they didn't have any experience. In the last probably two years, the, the staff was just a part-time employee, twenty-nine hours or less, and they were expected to do full-time hours. So we can start one, it's just going to be cost, very costly, but that's, that's a decision councilmen need to make.
Question comes up, Keith, of, are we going to have enough participation from the businesses to operate a chamber?
But, if we start one, there's, one of the challenges that you're going to have, and I bet it, and I think it's the, option number three, one of the challenges you're going to have is, um, re-establishing trust in the community, because the chamber that was in place lost significant amount of trust, uh, in the community, with the business community, because like I say, all, the, the, everything I heard was, "All you're doing is asking for our money, and we're getting nothing in return, we're not getting any training, we're not getting any," you know, the events were more suited towards, um, we, we had a, a taste of Northwest, and the last year they did it, they had like five restaurants. And it was Taste of Northwest, the, the people just weren't wanting to participate in that.
But what are we going to win if we go in with another chamber? Who's going to look out after our best interest?
That's, uh, option number two, I'll, I'll tell you about it. Number one, what we had with the previous chambers, we had an exec, we had, uh, someone on the, the board, which was myself. I was not on the executive committee because the, the way it was written was, is staff cannot be on the executive committee. However, if, if we are funding, are partially funding a, a chamber, then we should be on the executive committee also, and we weren't. And I was just one person out of fifteen board members. Uh, there was a total of about three that were on, um, listening to the voice of reason, as opposed to doing things. They had board members on there that were there to pad their resumes, and they blatantly said that. Looked bad on a resume.
My, my problem here is, I don't see the requirements, I see, I don't see anything here like a Pew Matrix, which tells me, "These are the requirements we need to have, uh, you know, one of these." A viable chamber, and whether or not we even want, or not want, or even need one, so, uh, I, I don't see any data back from our businesses saying, "This is what we need from a chamber" in which we are not already getting. Because I, I know that you're providing a certain amount of that, so.
Number one, staff and economic development's trying to provide what the chamber couldn't.
So what, what if we just, this is just a what if, what if we just brought in one more resource to, to help manage that? And.
That's a council decision, certainly.
Well, I know, I, that is, but you see what I'm saying, I, I, we need those options. To me, I'm saying, you know, I want to know what the requirements are for it. If I have a chamber of comm, a chamber of commerce, what are the absolute must-have requirements to start a chamber of commerce? And then I want to compare option A, option B, and option C to those, do like a one-three-nine measurement.
And have we even talked to the businesses to see if they're even interested in having a chamber?
Yes, and yes, is the answer. Not knowing exactly the matrix, metrics is that you're requesting right now, uh, prior to the meeting, I don't have those things available for them.
Because I'm sitting here, and I'm trying to do the pros and cons on this, and I'm comparing, I'm kind of comparing apples and oranges, right? I, I read one, okay, these are pros, these are, but I'm not, it, not everyone has the exact ten list of, this is a pro or this is a con, but it's trouble, I mean, so.
There are three different, there are three different options, two of them are similar, but they're three different options.
But then it goes back to the, do we even need a chamber of commerce? But then it goes back to the, do we even need a chamber of commerce?
And that's for the council to decide. The business community, at least that I've talked to, have been asking about that because our area doesn't have one, Saginaw area doesn't have one, Lake Worth area doesn't have one. We both have one.
I don't own a convertible either or a boat, but that doesn't mean I need one.
There was talk before the Saginaw Chamber folded and joining forces with the Lake, or the Northwest Chamber. And here's the reason why it didn't happen. The board members didn't want to lose their titles.
Yeah, self, yeah. That makes, that makes sense. It's, that's human nature, right?
That was more important than doing what was best for the community.
Absolutely. We need to make sure we don't fall down that again, right?
That's exactly right.
What would a chamber offer over and above what you're doing for our businesses right now, other than taking?
A lot.
Giving your time back to you.
Quite a bit. If, if, if I can move to the second option, I can tell you some of those.
Okay.
Hit the wrong button. If I can move to the second option, I can, I can explain some of those things to you. Quite, I'm going to give you three options and quite frankly, I really don't care what y'all decide. Whatever y'all think is best for the community, we're going to go along with. I'm just, all I'm doing is just giving you pros and cons of things that I've heard and things that I've, I've done research myself, so... Trying to make it larger for you. Several months ago, I was contacted, I didn't reach out to them, they contacted me. It was the Northeast Terrant Chamber of Commerce. I happened to be driving my daughter back to college in Colorado and I got this random text. "Hey Keith, what are your thoughts about us, or about Saginaw, joining our chamber? We're looking at expanding our chamber into your area. We know that you don't have a Chamber of Commerce. We know that Lake Worth area doesn't have a Chamber of Commerce. What do you think?" And I said, "Well, I'm driving in the mountains of Colorado. Let me, whenever I get somewhere where it's a little safer to drive, I'll be able to answer your question." That made sense to me. Northeast Terrant, I found I was able to meet with them in June, to talk to them and listen to them, just to hear what they had to say. I talked to the CEO, president, which is, happens to be his title. I talked to several of the businesses that were there. Even talked to their, most recently, I talked to their president, which is an elected position, and their past chairperson about, about membership. Never commenting to anything, just listening to them. And their thought, you were asking about joining, you know, Lake Worth and what their, their goal, or what they would like to do is establish, or if they were to able to take in Saginaw, they would establish a satellite office in Saginaw. They're one of the best Chamber of Commerces in Terrant, not just Terrant County, but in DFW area.
Where would that be in Saginaw?
Where would it be? That wouldn't be decided if, if, if we joined that. They haven't bought a location because they don't even know if Saginaw's going to be a part of it, so... That's the only way I can really answer it. I don't know yet. But their, their plan was to have a satellite office in Saginaw. Once they, once, if we did join, that would happen. Then their plan was to take in Lake Worth area and form a more regional Chamber of Commerce. Smaller Chamber of Commerces, quite frankly, don't work anymore. They, they really, really struggle. I'm all for having a Saginaw area Chamber of Commerce where we're all just Saginaw, but not starting one from scratch with the problems that we had in the past. What's happening is when you see Chamber of Commerces, you see more regionally. Even Northeast Terrant is Haltum City, Richland Hills, North Richland Hills, and Watauga. It's a little region. They're trying to move in this direction. Northwest Metropore, same thing. It's not just one city. It's a group. HEB, of course. And Fort Worth is their own monster.
So if we either joined or started new and how much commitment do we have? Because you said that our businesses said they really want one. How many signed up that they would, they would immediately sign up and would be on the, on the?
How many, how many businesses would sign up to be members of their chamber?
Of, yeah, of a chamber.
That's a, that's a difficult question to be put on the spot to answer because they don't even know about this because no decision's been made on what direction we're going with the chamber. If they knew, that would be a little, that, that's what you wanted to do, it'd be easier to answer that question. But what the business is not even knowing that, that you are or are not going to join Northeast Chamber, that's, that's difficult and impossible to answer.
You said the businesses said they wanted a chamber.
They didn't say specifically which one. They just said they would like to have a chamber. They miss having that and have those business opportunities.
Can we survey the businesses in Saginaw and find out, get their input?
Sure. They can.
Just, I mean, so out of all the businesses, you asked, are we talking 10%? Are we talking 20? Are we talking three?
I'd say probably 10%, at least 10% that I've talked to. Couldn't give you an exact number because I don't check off marked boxes on how many that came, I've talked to. I've talked to a lot of people. Some of the pros is a significant savings for the city. You're not having to start a chamber from scratch. There's no admin cost. There's no staffing cost. Northeast Terrant Chamber brings 65 years of experience to the partnership. There's four cities. If Saginaw was to join, we would be the fifth. And the question I ask is, how does that balance out? What kind of balance is that? Do they get, are they up here? Are we down here? No, you're equal. You're 20, 20, 20, 20, 20. It's 20% level with everyone else. You're in the same level as the other cities, even though they've been there longer. I mentioned having a satellite office. The Northeast Chamber can bring, one of the things I highly suggest you do before you make any decision is to go to the Northeast Terrant Chamber website and just take a look. And you can see, I can tell you some of the things that they offer, but I'm 54, my brain shrinks, especially when it's almost eight o'clock at night. I get tired. I can't remember exactly everything 100% of their programs. But things that they do offer are networking groups, membership luncheons. I went to one of their membership luncheons about two weeks ago. Last Thursday, they had a luncheon specifically for just nonprofits, not for the general. They have a monthly general luncheon, but this was specifically for nonprofits. They put on major events, their school district partnership with Bodville ISD, Hanover ISD, Terrant County College. The president of their organizations is the president of the Northwest, I'm sorry, the Northeast Chamber of Commerce. Oh, Northeast, Terrant County College Northeast and nonprofit engagement, which I just talked about.
So this one, we're talking about this Northeast Terrant Chambers, that's the one that would put a satellite here?
Yes.
Okay. And that's the one that Lake Worth is part of?
No, no.
Is a totally separate?
Their ultimate plan is if Saginaw joins, what they would like to do is form a more regional chamber, which is a north Terrant, which would include Lake Worth if Lake Worth so chooses to join. Because right now, they have nothing.
So for us to join this is only going to cost us $35,000 a year?
That's correct. You can join to be a member, I didn't write it on there or put this on there, just to be a member like any other business and it's a little over $1,000. To be a partner city, same equal as North Richland Hills, Watauga, Haltum, and Richland is $34.95 a year.
That could include a satellite office?
Satellite office is their responsibility.
Right, but surveying it, we'd get a satellite office.
In Saginaw.
And they would staff it?
Yes, that's correct. We're not responsible for staffing it. They are.
Well, that probably sounds like the best bet right there.
So strengthened numbers. And the, the individual businesses, they pay some rate based on employee size or something? So individual business, if they want to participate, city's a whatever, partner, one of the five, and then each business has to.
Yeah. That's part of the number, doesn't include every single business. The businesses do it individually.
They'll take care of all that, trying to get all our businesses in.
That's correct.
I know, you ought to do that.
We have nothing to do, I could do that, but they have, they have quite a bit of staff, which is, which is helpful, which is something that our previous chamber was not able to do.
Are they considering a name change if they were to do this?
Yes, but, but, North Chamber of Commerce.
That's a turn off, I think, to some people here that, being Northeast, we're not Northeast. But if they make it worth it, it's going to be a lot more.
That's what they wanted to change it to. That's correct.
So could, could, would the next step be then to take this option two and float it by the businesses and see how many, what the businesses think of it?
Yeah.
Because literally this is going to live or die on the mound of the businesses participating in it.
I think we should...
We get a copy of the bylaws?
I didn't print off everything. I love the commercials.
Or is it on the website?
You print off the website. I didn't print off the website for you. But if you go to their chamber or website, you can, you can see all of that information.
I think a couple of us should attend maybe their next meeting to see what it's about, talk to them. And I also think that at TML, we can talk to the Lake Worth folks and see what their interest is. It's a lot more poutable to me if we have something here in Lake Worth that's involved. Though I think that would bring some more Northwest flavor.
Can we join anytime or is there a set?
Join anytime. It's up to the council.
We can discuss this and everything in there.
There are 41 cities in Terrant County. Is that correct, Mayor?
We're one of 42, yes, ma'am.
Okay. Since you're the president of the mayor's council, I...
I was last year.
Oh, you were. Okay, okay. I thought, I thought you had that number off the top of your head.
I'm past president this year.
Okay.
We can join the Fort Worth Chamber, but we'll not be that big in the, within the Fort Worth Chamber.
And I was... So my question is, is how many chambers are in Terrant County? And how many cities in Terrant County participate in chambers?
I would say almost all of the chambers, all of these cities participate in some chamber or another. But it's, I can't speak for Blue Mound right now, but I know that Blue Mound was a member of this chamber when, when it was in existence. And they're a pretty small city. All the, all the cities that surround, or at least in Terrant County, they're all a member of something, of some chamber or another.
How do you think that we're going to need a Chamber of Commerce? I'm not really, I mean, if it was that cheap, I think we should do that one. Especially if they put a satellite here.
The satellite makes it nice.
I like the sound of that.
I'll move on to the option three real quick. I've talked a little bit about the previous chamber. Both our chamber and Northwest Chamber both folded, not meeting the needs of the business community. I talked, like on fact, the three I talked about, the reason they didn't move is because they wanted to keep their titles. They, our chamber, I can't speak for Northwest Chamber because I'm not a member. I'm not active, well, I wasn't active in their chamber. But our chamber lost a significant amount of money each year and operated in the lab. They weren't able to fund rent for the last year that they were there. I talked about having, they went from a, first five years that I was involved, they had a great leader. They had a great staff. They put on great programs, very business-oriented. And then from that point on, it, the staff director went from a professional to a friend to a part-time job. And it wasn't providing, I think you can probably see how it was not, they were not able to provide for the business community. When you have somebody working part-time hours and expect them to be a full-time employee, working more than 40 hours a week, that's kind of tough. One of the problems they had was they didn't understand the role of what a chamber really does. It's not, they're not even planning businesses. One of the things that killed them was, was event after event after event. And the same people were volunteering, the same people were sponsoring, and it slowly got, slowly got smaller to where the, those same sponsors weren't signing up. It's like, "All you're doing is asking for my money." And the same people were working the events and they're getting burned out because it was event after event after event after event. And the volunteers got just worn out to like, "I don't want to do this anymore." Volunteers are volunteers. They're not paid. If you say, "I'm going to have 50 volunteers that are going to show up for my event," you're not going to get 50 volunteers that are going to show up. Because there's someone going to think, "You know what? I'd rather sleep late and watch Premier League soccer today." That'd be me.
Yeah, I mean, that's me. That's, I want to make sure that if we have a Chamber of Commerce, we're listening to our businesses and we're doing what they say they need.
Well, we're listening to our businesses before, but one vote out of 15 doesn't make the decision. Same, same as, you know, a council, one council member doesn't make all the decisions for the city. The council as a whole does. And that's what we had with our chamber. There were three of us that were the voices of reason that saw the problems and were saying, "Here's, there's significant problems here." And when the rest were like, "No, there's nothing to see here and brush it under the rug and it's, there's nothing wrong." And there were significant problems.
Well, the Chamber of Commerce didn't go under in one night, so if it was a systemic problem with one person, they're still, I'm assuming, voted in, voting members.
And like I said, they were operating in the red for several years.
So we've got the, I think next Thursday, we have our quarterly business breakfast and the Northeast Terrant Chamber, is it CEO?
Mm-hmm.
Is going to come. He's not going to speak on this topic, but maybe a good chance to talk and share some of these concerns. I've not met him personally. I think Keith has talked a few times, so...
He was not selected to be the speaker just for this meeting that we're talking about right now.
Kind of chance, but...
What he offers and what he can teach our business community is what a Chamber of Commerce should be doing and can do. He was, he's going to be speaking on business relationships, establishing relationships and networking. That's what he's going to be talking about. Has nothing to do with what we're talking about right now.
I think option two is great. I'd like to see us poll the businesses, let them know what it's going to cost them and what they're going to get for the bang for their buck and see what their opinion is because it's ultimately going to be their decision. We have to make the, the council has to make a decision, but they're the ones that are going to have to live with it going forward.
And like I said, I don't care what y'all choose outside. It's your decision. It's our business's decision. I'm, you know, when I'm presenting to you different options, I'm giving you options. It's going to cost this much money if we start our own. And we're not going to get as much benefit because we can't afford the staff. And the staff can't, with the staff that you're going to have, they can't put on the programs and do the training and do the things that every other, all these other larger chambers can do. This one, this option can give you that.
Yeah, definitely with the data you got, option two is the way to go. My problem is I need to hear back again from the businesses and see what their requirements are and then see if option two will meet the minimum, their minimum need.
And it sounds like the breakfast would be a great way to collect that information.
I just know that if we start our own, we're going to have a really tough time because one, it's going to be staff doing it at first. And then we've got to get our business community to get that trust back. Because it was lost. I know those are hard things that I'm saying, but I'd rather tell you the truth than tell you what you want to hear.
Well, I think, definitely for me, I mean, I'm looking at, I think it was option two, right?
I want you to make an executive, an educated decision on what you think is best and whatever that is, we'll live with it.
Charlie, do you have a question?
You're, you're looking, you're not looking at a 50-year contract with them. You know, so if you get into it and you're with them two or three years and you think you can support your own, then adios, muchachos. You know, it's time to go.
You can.
Is there a way that we could combine option one and option two? Still use Terrant County College Northwest campus and, and their students as part?
That would probably, thinking how the other chambers are that have colleges within their, that are part of them, just like the Northeast Terrant has the Northeast, there's so many Northeast and Northwest, I'm getting confused. The Terrant County College Northeast is a member of Northeast Terrant. It's a lot of words, a lot of acronyms. They're members of that. Same with the other campuses. They're all a member of something.
Yes, ma'am.
To me...
To me, if, you know, this well-established entity, if I were a business owner, I would be more attracted to something like that. You know, that's already in existence, that has a thriving, you know, membership. I think if they did get a satellite office here, which they would do, I think their first order of business would probably be to recruit all these businesses, and Saginaw, you know, give them the sales pitch and they would have the staff to do that. So I, it seems like a real good idea to me.
One of the problems they had, at least every year that I was involved in it, was, you know, they couldn't afford staff. And when, for those of you who remember Brendan Payne, he was, he did a great job. He knew what he was doing because he's done it, that he did it before as a chamber president. And we did a survey of every Chamber of Commerce and what the, whatever the title was, executive director, whatever you want to call them, the staff person. We did a survey of all the salaries of that, and Saginaw was by far the lowest salary. And eight, several years after that, we did it again, and there's no question we're by far, and we got to the point, like I said, that we were, we had a part-time employee. Expected to do full-time work.
One of the things that I appreciate most about you Keith, is that you come to the council with options. And I, that, that gives us an opportunity to look at things from multiple positions. And you obviously put a lot of work and time in this presentation, and I appreciate that, thank you.
Like I said, I don't care what y'all decide, I really don't, because we're going to live with it, and whatever decision is made, we're going to make it work.
Well, I, I mean, my ask is, go back to our businesses and ask them what their requirements are. For, what do they need from, from, from this, right? Well, I mean, if, here's my thing, if you're not willing to ask your customer what they need, then, then you're shooting in the dark. I mean, here's really simple, the old Chamber of Commerce went out of business because they was not meeting their customers' needs. And you could see that year over year, their customers said, well, you're not providing the service that I need, so they dropped them, right? So if you want to be business and you want to go out of business, then don't meet your customers' needs. And if you're afraid to ask your customer, then maybe you shouldn't be in business.
We're not afraid to ask our customers, but we're going to ask them.
I hear most of the council supports option two, but I think we need a little more information. So do we have a plan to go forward? Keith, you have a pretty good idea of what you need to do?
Yes.
I think we need to, many folks just can't attend the breakfast next Thursday morning, right? The twenty-ninth, that's a shameless plug.
I appreciate that.
Is that the same one that I replied to you back, or is that a different one?
Oh, yes, twenty-ninth, well, actually, one of the reasons it's taken a little while to get this one scheduled, because I was working with two different people trying to get them, work with their timeline. And Jack with the Northeast Chamber just happened to speak first, because I was playing a lot of phone tag trying to get our other one scheduled. And then about two days later, the other one said, we can't do that week, but we can do this week in November. So when, when you can get Judge Glenn Whitley, you take it when, when you can get him. And he's going to be in, in the ninth of November. So we'll have two relatively close together, but it'll be worth it.
All right, anything else we need to discuss on this, and we've got some action, Keith will get us a little more information and come back around. But thank you for the, the background, this is good, good stuff.
Can you, can you send us an email on this twenty-ninth meeting, when to show up and where to show up at?
Oh, sure, yeah. I put, in the names box, I put the flyer of the, of the event, it kind of has a little timeline, and there's networking. What we've done with our local business thing is no different than a chamber luncheon or a chamber breakfast, where you have, you know, you have the networking part to the thing, then you have the city or the chamber speaker about whatever's going on. Then you have your speaker, and everybody eats lunch or breakfast or whatever it is, and then there's networking at the end. Same thing as a chamber luncheon, same thing as a chamber breakfast, it's just what we're providing with the absence of not having a chamber.
Do you have a lot of R S V Ps for this yet?
They come in slow, they're just like runners, they wait till the last minute to sign up. And then some of them show up at the, at the event, say, I want to sign up and race your, your event, but that's what usually happens. We try and get enough food for more than what is R S V P.
Yeah, let's see if we can get a bunch of folks there, that'd be good. All right, let's move forward, gang, so that's twelve, we're skipping thirteen for next time, so fourteen. Communications update and citywide customer satisfaction survey workshop. For that, Pedro Zambrano, communications manager, welcome Pedro.
Thank you, mayor and council.
Pedro, hold on just a second.
I think I'm going to wait, there you go, that's what I was waiting on. I would say I am surprised I caught that, it is close to my bedtime as well. All right, we're just going to wait for the presentation to go up. So my presentation is in three parts, we're going to try to go as fast as we can, but also talking through it. Just because it's about thirty-eight slides, we have, it's already eight o'clock, and I haven't had dinner yet. So, let's see if this works. So let's talk about the city survey first, let's, let's tackle that first. In your packets, I, I sent off the draft city survey, which I have here, the estimated mailing cost and the timeline. So we are budgeted twelve thousand dollars, and it includes mailing, which is sending and returning, the printing of the survey and the survey software. So let me go back to the first point on mailing, so it's going to be two thousand dollars to send them, and that's the upfront cost. And anytime a resident sends it back, that's when we will get charged by USPS. So if, let's say out of the eight thousand we send out only three thousand, send them back, we're going to be charged for the three thousand. Of course, I can't, I don't have a crystal ball, if I did, I wouldn't be in this room, I'll be somewhere else in space maybe, because I will know exactly what happens, we don't know how many residents will send it back. The survey will be mailed to every residential home in Saginaw, including multifamily addresses. The ability, they will have the ability to fill it out and mail it back to us, or fill it on online. So a question that I, that I had brought up previously by some city staff is, how do you know this resident lives in Saginaw and not a Fort Worth resident? So every single residential address will receive a survey code from the city. It's going to be on their mailing address, sorry, on their survey that they get mailed out to, and it's going to be unique to the actual address. So in order for them to fill out the survey, they will have to put the survey code in. That will negate the chance that we get Fort Worth residents or, or Saginaw, Michigan residents, that fact.
Is this survey supposed to be anonymous?
Yes, the, the survey code will make it anonymous, so that's one of the things.
But if it links to an address?
Yes, but that means it's, it doesn't mean like, oh, we know code zero zero five seven eight is three 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 McIlure Street. We just know that belongs to an address in Saginaw. I will keep that on record, matching them up, left it on a secure file, so nobody else could see it, just to keep the anonymity of the survey.
And if they send it in a return envelope and they put their return address on the envelope?
Of course, we will keep that, keep the surveys in, like in a file, but of course, we're not going to share that out because of privacy reasons as well. We don't want to.
You'll shred the envelopes?
No, so it won't be the actual envelope, so, show you real quick, so the actual survey will come, will be mailed like this. Yes, that's why the cost is two thousand dollars. And then once they finish it, they flip it over and then send it like that. So they all have to just drop it off at a mailbox, and the post office should send it, of course, I don't control the post office, so we are at their mercy as well. So the type of questions we're asking, they're multiple choice, there are some matrixes in there, and some open-ended questions. So let's talk about the timeline, so from, till up to the twenty-first of October, we're going to be preparing the survey. When I mean preparing, it is making sure it formats correctly with the post office requirements, just making sure, cross the Ts and dot the Is on there. From the twenty, the week of the twenty-fourth to the thirtieth of November, that's when the first part of that, they will be mailed out. And that is the actual survey portion, it's going to be thirty-seven days. The reason why we chose thirty-seven days and not thirty, is because we added the seven days for mailing and returning for those. Just to keep, give an equal amount of those who decided to do it on paper. From the first of December to the sixteenth, that's going to be data input analysis, that's just in case for, knock on wood, all eight thousand recipients turn back, return their survey. It takes a long time to go through that, especially with the number of questions we're asking. And hopefully on the twentieth, we'll have those findings to present to council. So that's a quick rundown, does any council member have any questions on the actual survey?
Yes.
Yes, let me just open mine up, because I folded it.
I was going to say, to begin with, I missed the actual surveys, I didn't get to review it, so.
Oh, okay.
Apologize for that, I'll, I'll need to review it after the fact.
Okay, yeah, definitely, we are open to changing it.
One of the questions is, do you get enough information from Saginaw about programs and services, how would they know?
I know, I had the same question.
Because you can't.
And that's number six, I believe?
Unless you're involved with the, the business part of Saginaw, how would you, how would they know? They wouldn't know if they were getting that, because they don't know what services your, our events or whatever programs.
What question?
Number six.
It says, do you get enough information about Saginaw programs and services, how would they know? Unless you put out a monthly calendar with the month, I mean, what events were going on, that's kind of a question.
I struck that one too.
Yeah, I think the best response for that, currently just standing here, would say, if they do respond no, that means we know we need to do our better, better due diligence to get that information out there. So that question actually pertains to the communications office.
Yeah, it doesn't make sense to me either.
Yes.
So every once in a while, I will hear something from a resident, oh, I didn't know we had that. Oh, I didn't know Saginaw did that, so that person would know, I, this person, am not getting enough information. So they would have that history of knowing they don't get that information. When they hear of things randomly and they didn't know about it, then they would know to say, no, I don't get enough information. And, and other people would probably say yes, because they know what's going on. I think it's just an individual person would know what that answer was for him or herself.
Okay.
And also another question, number sixteen A, we've been doing a lot of surveys and what they wanted in Saginaw. And so I think they kind of get tired of telling us what they want.
And it's been several years, you're going to have new folks as well, so it's a pretty reasonable ask, and you're not just asking, if you have a choice, you're not asking to write down things, so.
So would you just, are you recommended to remove that question, or would you reword it?
I think I'd reword it, I don't know.
Sixteen A or B?
They tell us they don't want car washes, they don't want gas stations, they don't want this and that and the others, so.
I looked at that one too, and I thought it should go along with the other matrix-type question. You know, do you want yes, no, or don't know, maybe? And then that, just by looking at their responses, that'll kind of give you an indication of which ones they think are most important, based on the number of responses. I thought this survey was too long, too many questions, and I think there's ways that it could be merged together and shorter.
I could definitely take a look at that and then.
I can stop by tomorrow and talk with you about.
On sixteen A, you're talking about, consider having a circle or check the ones you want, just have each one listed, say, do you want hotels, you want gases?
Yeah, put yes, no, don't know, or don't care, or something.
I'm just thinking, we'd get more responses, we'll, third, be able to fill it out return, that's what we need to think about, have to get some responses.
Yeah, if they skip it, that's a don't know.
Yeah, I, this is definitely not, again, it's a draft, if we feel like we should shorten it. I could definitely ask one question, do you like Saginaw?
So, let me ask you, picking these questions, did you use a model, or did you go look at what other, others it ran? How did you determine these questions?
So I did look at other cities of what they asked, I look at the ones around our area. I didn't go to the major cities, just because they're, it's a different beast. So I did look at other cities, and that's what determined, I would say, some other cities, their questions were longer than ours, or their surveys were longer. So I just picked, I didn't create all these questions out of the top of my head. You want to kind of repeat what other cities have done, don't reinvent the wheel. And these were some of the top questions that were answered in their surveys.
I've got a couple of comments, one, can we add a two A? It'd be nice to know, if somebody's going to recommend or not recommend Saginaw, we need to know why.
I'd requested several comments as well.
So what if we all just read this, send him our comments, and then, you know, that way he can then get them and compile them?
Yeah, we could definitely.
I think that would be good, and with recommendations, if we don't like, if we don't understand a question, either say, remove it, or give him a recommendation for rewording it, because I, I mean, you know, if I go, well, I don't like the wording of this question, then you're guessing that what I think is good, we need to give him, if we don't like, if we want it to be rewarded, we need to say, we think it should be rewarded this way.
Yeah, we could definitely take all comments and then compile them, and we could recreate this.
One of my major concerns that I have with this particular survey is that it's manual. And Nick, being a data guy like I am, you're trusting somebody to compile all this information, hopefully eight thousand surveys, but we know that's not necessary, going to happen. Why don't, why don't we use something like Survey Monkey, or another type of program where people can go online? We can go out to, they can go to the library, they can be out at the farmer's markets, they could come to city hall and fill out a survey there if they don't have, just send out a postcard with their code on it. And that will pull all your data together, and then that data can be manipulated. This just seems like there's a lot of room for error this way, and same on postage. Postcards are a whole lot cheaper to mail than an eight-page document.
For sure, we could definitely look at that option, the reason why I chose this route is because anything online, if it doesn't interest people quickly, for example, TikTok, those are ten-second videos, instant gratification. If they go online, see the survey, they may or may not complete it, just because they got a link on Facebook. Again, same thing with this as well, but at least it's a tangible item they have in their home.
Isn't part of the concern, you've got folks that don't have internet access, or don't have computers, or don't have whatever, or aren't computer savvy, isn't that part of your concern?
And that's what I'm saying, we've got the farmer's market, we've got the city hall, we've got the library, we've got the rec center, we've got the senior citizen center.
But the people picking them up at the farmer's market, you don't know where are they?
That's what I said, you send, no, 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 I said, we send out a postcard with the little code that he's talking about. And then they take that with them to one of multiple locations. But a postcard's what, thirty-five cents now, compared to, it's a lot cheaper.
Forty cents, yes, forty cents.
Forty cents now?
Uh, what we can do is, I could compile a cost analysis on the postcards as well, and present it to you after the comments I received from council.
Do y'all think people would get a postcard and bring it somewhere, take, take the effort to go somewhere else and fill it out? I think, wouldn't they be more likely to fill it out at their own helm, and they have to go somewhere else with, take the postcard with them? Don't forget that, and then go to wherever, I like farmer's market, using that for doing things, but would they, how many people do that? I don't know.
Yeah, so, on my timeline that I submitted, there's a portion where we're going to be at the farmer's market, reaching out. So on farmer, I believe it is the week of the seventh of November, and there's another one in here as well.
I'm concerned with the accuracy of capturing the data.
I'm concerned with getting data off, getting data back, I think we're asking people to make, take two or three steps, that seems like you're.
But the majority of people do have internet at home.
I would hope so.
They could use it on their phone.
Yes, they could do it online as well.
So, I mean, let's take advantage of that.
Yeah, we could, like I said, we could definitely look at those as well, and that, that's a good route to take, and I'll definitely look at the cost analysis on that.
That concerns me.
You're printing out a couple hundred pieces compared to eight thousand copies.
This is why we have a workshop. It's a good brainstorming session.
So when do you want information back by?
So my current timeline is, I would like for the survey to go out mid-October. So I don't have a calendar in front of me. I left my phone over there.
He's got about ten more days or so. He can do this. We got.
He can have it done tomorrow. I got notes all over this stuff.
Yeah, you can definitely get them to me this week. I could start.
This week?
I could start mid-week next week, just because I do have a few things going on.
Coming up with what you feel is a file.
Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
I do think it's important to mail them to each individual address. I think we're going to get a much better response that way. And it's more official, and it's more important looking. You know, it's more like, oh, they took the trouble to mail me this. Perhaps I will fill it out. I think you're going to get a better response. And there is that option to do it online. When you get this in the mail, you can choose to do it. You can choose to answer it online, correct?
The more options and the more different ways you present the data to people, the better response you get. So if you have it where they can log on, and we're bombarding them on, like, the different, like Saginaw residents page, the Good Neighbors page, those, hitting all of those. And then also at the farmer's market, passing stuff out.
How about the library?
Library.
Library. Ellen's right there. She'd be excited to help us out.
When it comes to pay bills.
The more different ways you present it, the higher your numbers are going to go. But always remember, in a survey like this, I think usually around ten percent is pretty exceptional.
And I just didn't want to do away with the mailing to the homes. I agree, there's more ways to pass out the survey. But I think it's important to send them to the individual addresses.
I think, go. I'm catching everybody, so we're good, catching everybody's comments, and I look forward to everyone's comments.
So folks, send, please, your thoughts on this, please.
Yeah, thank you. And let me just get to my page on my notes. We can move on to the next portion.
So can, so can, can all the council members, can we all agree to get him our comments by this Friday?
By the end of the week.
Okay.
That's our homework.
Can we just print this out and just, let me ask you a question. Can we print this out, and then we write what we might need to be, what we think might need to be reworded or everything, and put some comments on the bottom and just bring it to the.
Yeah, you could just drop it off. You don't need to scan your card to get to my office, so.
I don't have time to sit down on my pad and top stuff up, so I just.
Yeah, you could just stop by.
I'm going to wait till you send me a postcard, then I'll bring that in.
Yeah, definitely. You could always stop by. There might be somebody in front of the line trying to pay their ticket at my, at my desk.
Oh, I do, okay. Oh, that's right. Are we done talking, discussing this subject?
Yeah, we are done discussing the survey portion, yes.
Is Kelly, Kelly Stewart Hill? Kelly, I didn't see you in the back. I thought you had left, I'm sorry.
Kelly Stewart, four oh four Mustang Drive. The questions I have are some of them that you have brought up. If I go to the farmer's market and fill one out, and then fill my form that I have at home, and do it online, how are you going to figure it out? That I didn't do three of them.
Go early on, that sounds great.
Say, I.
That number is not going to mean a lot, because he's not going to have time to sit there and make sure.
I don't think we're going to have that problem getting too many. I think too few is going to be a problem.
No, but if I, if I send in three or four.
That's true.
Yeah, you send a code, and so just to, don't mean to keep us here longer, but some of the efforts we've done in the past, online, have not been scientific. So we do a Survey Monkey, and everybody in Blue Mound. I mean, let's be honest, it's probably the Blue Mound crowd that brought all the chicken restaurants, so we've, we've heard from the Saginaw crowd. But having a document, and I understand, council member, big horse concern, paper, and gets, you know, gets out of hand, but you have that tracking code, so we don't have multiple.
Yeah, but if you're going to do that, and you're going to hand me one at the farmer's market, and I fill it out again.
Sure, but you'd have one code, I think, so you wouldn't have multiple entries.
Is it one code per household, or is it one code per area?
It's one code per household.
So Fred and I cannot.
Does your software stop you from entering twice with that same code?
So, the farmer's market, asking that question, it's going to be a QR code to the actual survey website. It won't be the actual survey, just because people need to get the codes.
Okay, but how is, how, how are Fred and I going to both, both fill one out if we only have one code?
The survey's built for per-residence, but if, like I said, if you want to do more than one, we definitely, we have to, that's, yeah, that's something we can look into.
It's like, can't combine yours?
Fred and I are not going to agree.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, too, yeah, yeah, so.
You know, but.
You mentioned coming to consensus at the house.
I, I think a mentor once told me, happy, happy life, happy life, so.
Well, tell him to talk to Fred at four oh four Mustang Drive. Okay.
But you'll work on that, trying to figure that out, so that.
So, yeah, the, the survey software will, will let you do it if you have a survey code already in there.
Anything else, Pedro? I don't want to cut you off, but it is late.
Okay, yo, let's keep going.
Okay.
We still got a while to go.
It's late.
So let's talk about the communications side of, let me just move this out of the way. So the Office of Communication oversees the website, all city and Saginaw social media channels, the strategic plan for communications, the media relations, and special events. Which we could definitely talk about that in a future item, just because special events does take a long time. So this department or office, I'm, I'm in limbo, what I currently am, was created in January twenty-two. We, the first priority I did when I came in was to conduct audit of all the communications that we currently have as a city. Some subtle changes were made throughout the portion, but more changes are to come for next fiscal year. One of the major changes I did do, even, even though I just said subtle, was to bring the city communications to compliance with state legislative and court rulings. Actually, I also brought it up towards the resolution this council passed in February twenty-one, which is Resolution twenty-one zero-six and twenty-one zero-seven, which is the social media. I actually forgot the official name, but the social media policy of the city. And archive social, just because the state legislator requires us to archive all social media, just because it's a public record, because it was created by our government. So the purpose of the communications audit was to analyze the effectiveness of all current city communication practices. And the best way I did it was, I sat down at the rec center and other locations throughout the city, and just had a conversation with, with people there. This wasn't scientific for the least, so you're not going to expect charts, or standard deviations, or end numbers, or anything of that nature. So let's talk about one of those few items that are in the audit. So the collateral materials, that's your flyers or posters, anything that's printed, from your memos, letterheads. Some residents said it was well-designed. One outtake was not really a consistent style throughout the city. So one recommendation is to create a style guideline, but not one to deter departments from being creative. One of the guidelines we will recommend is for colorblindness. I did see a poster one time where the color red was on top of a green lettering, and that just throws everybody off who has colorblindness, and they can't get that information. So internal communications, staff, when I talked to staff, they wanted to have information, they wanted to receive information better. Just because a lot of them did not have city emails, and if they did, some of them are out in the field and don't really check them that much. So if the city did have to shut down because of a winter storm, some of them didn't receive it until hours after. So that is why in Remind was initiated and implemented in August to fill this gap. So ninety-nine percent of all full-time employees are on it, meaning they're registered on it. We're still in the early stages, but it's being used. HR uses it a lot. That's how we told employees, like, this is your healthcare signup time, or flu shots today. The reason why internal communications is so important is, we are ambassadors as city employees of our city. So if we don't know what's happening internally, how can we express that externally to the community?
So does all new employees now get a city email?
I don't think all city employees. I believe it depends on their status and job. But they do sign up for Remind. I, that's a question I do not, I can't answer, because I'm, I don't know, I defer to somebody who might know or may not know, and if not, I could definitely get that.
So I think almost all of our city employees have email addresses. The exception would be a few folks in, like, Public Works out in the field. Although we've set up, I think we're going to add a, a computer where they can log in. So like through Outlook, same thing for y'all's emails, you can log in any device anywhere. And then Remind is like a, it's a text message type in a website, so we send messages out that can go to departments or citywide.
So just to piggyback on that, it's a text message, an app, or an email that they receive to their, their personal email if they don't have a city email. All right, so let's talk about the logos real quick. So the official city logo, does anybody know what this city logo represents?
Grain elevators.
Grain elevators, yes. I'm really glad the council knows, because I've received toaster, three-barrel shotgun, and many other items. So our recommendation is to either revamp it to make it look more like a grain elevator, or just to change it. If you, I could see it, because people call me a creative type, but there's a little bit of a slope on the top grain that bothers me every time I go to the website. But it's just so tiny, it's very subtle, that, like, naked, I can't see it, but it's just. Well, that brings them to my next point. If we were to design something new, it would be the community's input.
That business. But this is ours, though. This is not hers. This is ours. We got it one with our own.
So it just depending on the direction the council will like, again, if we were to design a new one, it would have to be with community's input. It wouldn't be something we draw up in the, in the back room, just.
Didn't we have that copyrighted recently, or protected?
I don't believe.
I think we did file an application for that in order to receive some intellectual property.
Yeah.
But didn't the colors come from Boston?
Well, what's wrong with that turn? There's nothing wrong with Boston colors.
Yeah, definitely. So again, just direction, the council represents the community, the logo represents the community, so wherever we go. If we do go revamp, we wouldn't change the actual logo, maybe just change a few things, just because sometimes it does get pixelated on some items, like, especially at the website and some printed materials.
Anybody know how long we've had this, this logo? I'm looking at Janice, or Randy. Anybody know?
Black and orange, too.
Well, I wasn't born there when you.
That's it? I thought it was longer than that. We had it when I came on council, which was a heck of a long time ago.
I think there's a previous one with, like, barbed wire, and a boot or something.
Okay.
Yeah, so, so still speaking on the official logo, there are actually different versions of that, that each department uses. This creates a consistency problem. We need to choose one and run with it, because some logos are on some applications, and some logos are on other application. So how does a resident or a developer know, is this an actual official city, official city document, or official city correspondence? Just to bring the professionalism as well.
Which one of those is the official?
So the one that's official, that's on the website, is the top left, the one underneath the word different. And this is the current all-department logo, so you got the two fires, the PDs, your library, and all the other ones, emergency management. The library has three, so they're working hard out there. So just to speak on all the department logos, again, just to bring everybody together.
That bottom-left one, is that the bridge logo?
Yes, that, that logo was created be, due to the invitation to send out for the dedication ceremony. Yeah.
It cost enough, it deserved it.
It sure did, it. And it, it did take as long as to open the bridge as well. I had to talk to a couple of roadblocks to create it. So continuing on, so media relations, the city has three PIOs. I am the city one, the police is the chief, and the fire PIO is Chief Spears. The reason why, this is very important, is because I'm not a police officer or fireman, so I can't speak on subject matters that they pertain. As you can see, there's the mayor right there, because we opened up the bridge, and now that we just talked about the bridge. So another activity that we do in the communications realm is this right now. We're live-streaming the meeting. So council meetings are live-streamed, and we use Granicus, that's the vendor. This was initiated back in twenty-eighteen. On average, we get twenty viewers. This actual number is kind of skewed, just because the budget meetings. We had a higher rating than usual council meetings. This number is based off the last ten meetings, by the way. Pros, great tool to have, because people who can't make it due to disability, or work, or childcare, can't make it to the meeting, they could watch it. It includes an agenda tool that helps our city secretary a lot. Cons, this is one of the first things I noticed when I first started here, is presentations. For example, the presentation I'm presenting now, nobody in their home could watch it. They could definitely do a records quest for it, but they're not watching it in real time. Or the voting results, now that our voting results are on, on TV.
So is this something we can fix? I mean, why can't, I mean, modern technology?
Yeah, I, I'm going to go in more detail on that in a few slides. So the reason I say not use effectively is pertaining to the last point, only councils using it. We have PNZ Parks Board, Keep Saginaw Beautiful, the library board. Those are all boards where people in their water bills donate money. And one of my goals and objectives is to build transparency in the city. And if we can't watch those meetings, how are we being good servants to our residents if we're not providing that transparency?
Good point.
Also, is one camera angle, and the resolution is not that great. So once we do change, we could definitely start doing makeup and everything, and of course, for me, too. If, if I'm here long enough, if I start getting something back here, like my family's genetically, then I'll, I'll start fixing it up as well. Another one is our monthly newsletter. It provides residents with the latest happenings and events. It's distributed via the website, print, and social media. Unfortunately, the way it's currently done, there's not much a way to track how effective it is, because I can't see how many people are reading it, how many people click on it. I could see how many likes on Facebook, but that doesn't mean they're actually reading it. So our suggestion is to move towards a platform where we could track readers, yes.
I thought Facebook, I thought a lot of those did track clicks.
Yes, but it doesn't track if you're actually reading it. It'll track if you.
Opened it.
Opened it, or you scrolled past, or if you liked it.
Yeah.
We, we do get a number of shares, but again, I can't individually say, like, oh, I know for sure a hundred people read this per month. And it does take staff hours to create this newsletter, so we want to know if we're using our staff time effectively to do that. Signage, so we have one permanent, yes.
It's also on the website, isn't it?
Yes.
And you can track it there, because I know it's really hard to read, you know, on phones. Even when I go to my laptop on Facebook, it's difficult to read, so it's easier to go to the website. Do we put a link to the website?
Yes, so, for example, on if, it's a Facebook post, it will take you to the webpage that tells you, the webpage where it's located at to read it. Google Analytics, you could go down to the actual page, but I have to talk to Civic Plus, and it does take, it takes a huge undertaking on their part, just to do a specific link. Just because the way our platform is built on, on our vendor side. It's not just a simple HTML website where you could just go in, it's a, you're running into HTML and CSS on, on that side. Signage, so another way we communicate to the community is signage. So we have one permanent electronic sign located outside of Boulevard. It's a great tool to market. Like Keith talked about a few council meetings ago, it's very antiquated. I believe he said Windows ninety-seven is what we use. Correct me if I'm wrong. But it's, it's very old, and luckily, this budget season, or this budget that y'all just passed, we're going to be upgrading it.
I've threatened to drive my truck through it.
Oh, I would have been helping them as well. So during the interviews, I talked to, some people expressed maybe some additional signs. We could have, again, this will be a long-term project. Some suggestions were maybe in front of the rec center to accommodate the McElroy Boulevard, and maybe one on the other side of the tracks to accommodate the residents on that side.
Putting it at the railroad tracks, people have a lot of time to read it.
Oh, exactly, we definitely.
We have a bridge now, it's much better, Paul, come on.
And also on signage, it's quite difficult for residents and visitors to know where the animal shelter is at. So one recommendation is. So, uh, one recommendation is to add more signage to get to it. Yes, we do have some right now, but, uh, you have to be very focused to see it. I'll try to scroll it a little bit faster. So social media, we currently have 10 Facebook accounts. At the time of me creating this presentation and my memo, it was 10. Sometimes I randomly find one that was created for.
Sheldon has his own account?
Yes, Sheldon does have his own account.
Okay. Do you manage that one, chief?
So, uh, we have city, fire, rec, senior center, animal services, library, police, Sheldon, switch yard and run the brails.
Kate, those are all controlled by you because?
They all fall under the city. Yeah, so, um, the city has a business Facebook account and then each of those accounts are underneath the city account. I believe in a decentralized, uh, way. So again, um, PD knows what's going on and they post on their, uh, Facebook page, uh, library as well. I do mostly the city one, uh, because that's where I'm focused at. But if they need assistance, I'm always there to help. And I am admin on those accounts because of, uh, I believe it's 2106, the resolution y'all passed. And just some quick analytics down there. Surprisingly enough, our highest number of followers are from Fort Worth at 6,415. Saginaw comes second at 3,194. And our, women make up 75% and men about 25%, yes. Yes, uh, so I can't differentiate if.
Because we can't get our zip code changed.
Uh, we can't differentiate if this person lives in Saginaw and claims Fort Worth or lives in Fort Worth and just likes Saginaw a lot because we're, we're the cool kids, you know? So we'll continue on on social media, uh, Instagram, the library, the switch yard. And, uh, the police department has come forward with me and talked about potentially doing a police canine just because they know that Sheldon has a Facebook page and they want to compete, you know, those.
You don't have to.
Don't want to get in the middle of that.
Do a comparison between Sheldon.
Oh, we should definitely do that every, at the end of the year and every, uh.
When do we get to name the, uh, police canine?
Well, we have to get the dog first. We, we go on Monday to select that, that canine. He'll come back with us for 30 days before he goes back for training. So that name is normally a play on the formal name of the dogs. And I'd like to say our dog will have more action photos.
Lord.
I don't know, I see Sheldon working out every morning.
Yeah, we'll, we'll definitely. We could definitely look at, uh, those analytics. So, uh, we do have one TikTok account, which is animal services. LinkedIn is the city. The city also has a YouTube page and the library does as well. I believe Ellen spoke to me, YouTube was used a lot with the library during the pandemic. They did lower it down on their, uh, Twitter, city and PD. Just some legal jargon, social media moderated by governments, our public record. That is why if we see a comment on there that's, might be a little vulgar or condescending, we can delete it because it's like grabbing an actual sheet of paper and shredding it. That's the state legislative. I did reach out to our city attorneys and created a moderating policy and I talked to Kara and she got with me on that. That is where we have archive social because the city, we can delete comments, we can block people, we can delete posts, uh, and we can't hide posts either. Just because, uh, Supreme Court said, once a government creates a post or, um, a social media platform, that is now a public forum, um, just like here, a public hearing here. So I'll keep going, that's why we have archive social to archive all those. So city websites, so the city, we have two websites, the Training Grain website, which is Training Grain dash, or Saginaw Train dash Grain dot com. And the official city website Saginaw TX dot org, which I would say it was a pain to switch it to Saginaw TX dot org because if you did type in Saginaw TX dot org, it changed to CI dot Saginaw. And that was a good month, me and Greg were trying to figure that out. So our last redesign was in 2018. We currently have 719 webpages and about 15,000 plus, uh, documents and images on that website. So, uh, I did a little bit of math on every time somebody submitted a webpage request. It takes, the longest it took me was about 50, 45 minutes and the shortest was about 30 seconds. That was the easiest, uh, change I had to do. So I did an average and brought it down to maybe 30 per page. So that's roughly about 21,570 staff minutes, 360 hours or about nine work weeks. That means on our redesign, we're going to be going through each page and making sure it's good to go just because, um, this might, my second bullet point, some information is out of date. When I first started, the rec center was coming up to me, it's like, I don't know how, but this person found a rec center, um, sheet that has prices from 2018 and it says this was actually $10, but now we actually charge 25. So the people were somehow finding those documents, so I had to go in there and try to find it. People are very savvy, I would say. Uh, our website also not that great, mobile friendly wise. And, uh, I did not write down this analytic, but 80, 70 to 80% of our users are mobile. So they use their tablet and their cellphone. So we should start, uh, uh, tailoring to that just because, oh, can you check the city website? Let me check it on my phone. So now that I talked about the audit and, uh, everything I looked at, so here are some goals. I'll go through them very quickly. Focus on increasing transparency, efficiency, innovation. Provide residents city information through various channels, enhance internal communications, inform residents and protect organization's stability and reputations during times of crisis. Develop and maintain positive working relationships with members of the media. Uh, and then go through all of them, just save some time. So in order to reach those goals, here are the objectives. Elevate the city external communications. I could send you, uh, this slide just so y'all could read in detail unless y'all want me to go over each objective. Alright.
Top level.
Top level?
Yeah.
Objective two is implement marketing communication strategies. Reevaluate the city brand. That's when we talked about the logo and not just the logo, but, uh, consensus about the, around the departments. Enhance internal communication, uh, create and straighten external partnerships. So that's with the school district, HOAs. Review and update the city's emergency communications. So here are some projects that we'll be working on in this upcoming fiscal year. So editorial calendar, that's part of objective one. So I've spoke to department heads, so editorial calendar, we're going to meet and they're going to let me know what's happening this upcoming quarter. So we could, one, create, uh, some marketing for that, any flyers, uh, and just to help out. And that's going to be me, we're going to be meeting just before the quarter meets. Community and communications liaison, this is a program I would like to initiate in the next fiscal year. The way this program works is we'll start off with HOAs and get a member from each HOA and meet with them monthly as a group, either here at city hall or on Zoom. Just explain to them, hey, look, this is what the city has coming up. Can you please inform your HOAs? And then once we get established with HOAs, we need to start looking into the neighborhoods that don't have HOAs, uh, and get them started, uh, get them into the fold. The website redesign, I spoke briefly about that. The internal communications, we're continuing on that. Yes, we implemented it, but now it's time to actually dig our, uh, boots in to the Remind app. Branding guideline, create video content. I spoke briefly with PD, they want to create some content, uh, some safety content. Help out with police recruitment. I'm currently helping out with our recruiting officers on that. One of their biggest things was a QR code and I was able to create that and I think I, I won brownie points there. Hopefully, uh, if I get pulled over, they help out. But I want to be speeding in Saginaw, by the way. Live stream changes, which I'll go into detail right now, uh, and APEG cable channel redevelopment research. We'll go through live stream changes pretty quickly. Uh, this is just a recap of what we just talked about. So this is what it currently looks like. If someone goes and clicks on the video, they'll see the, uh, the video on the left side and the agenda on the right side. So when I first saw this, I was like, oh, this is pretty neat. If I just want to know about feral cats, I'll just click on the feral cat agenda and it'll take me on the video. Fortunately, that's not the case with our platform. Uh, it'll take you to the, um, the packet items. So our resolution is not that great either and we only have one camera and it points to the council. One of the biggest things during the interviews I talked to is they want to see people who are talking. So if Gabe is talking, they want to see Gabe's face. If, uh, chief is talking, well, you could already see the chief, uh, on, on the camera. But if Randy is speaking, they want to see Randy. People want to see who's speaking. I believe. Especially, yes, especially this one. I believe, uh, Kim is the person that, everybody knows her name, but nobody knows how she looks like. But she's requested multiple times not to be on camera. That is something she's requested, so. Cause, uh, I forgot somebody was saying, oh, Kim, she's really smart, but I just don't know how she looks like. So here are some of the changes that we're looking at. So one of the ways we're going to do that is I was researching some companies and I somehow, when I was researching something else, I was introduced to this product. I'm going to sound like a salesman for the next minute, which is terrible. I don't like, uh, pitching stuff to, to people. That's why I'm not a salesman, that's why I'm in this position. But we'll have the presentation, this is what people will see at home. The presentation will be on the left side and on the right side on top will be the council and on the bottom will be the presenter. So in this case, it'll be the, the corgi that's behind the, uh, the podium.
That's great.
So people will be able to see it. Uh, if you're thinking like, is this something we could do now? Unfortunately, the Granicus system, the way it's set up, we can't do that just now. We can, but it's going to cost us more in the outrun because it will cost more staff time because we need somebody to actually sit behind, uh, a mixer and, uh, change cameras and do the presentations and stuff. Much more hands-on than what currently Keith is doing over there. So the new live, live stream will include agenda building software because we talked about Granicus includes a, agenda building software. It's easier to use, everything will be on the iPad. So if you have your iPad in front of you, during the meeting, you actually get to see the item as well. Like I said, I'm going to sound like a salesman. And then you can actually click a button. So for example, if, uh, Councilman Lawson wants to speak and he wants to let the mayor know, he'll push a button on his iPad and let him know. But it will also be touchscreen as well. And Granicus, we're currently paying 13,500, that was the last check we sent out. And this software we're looking at is about 97.50. I reached out to them to give me an initial cost, just in case there was an initial payment. I don't have that, but I will get that to you. Again, this is just a presentation, there's no action to be taken here and we'll go wherever the direction council wants. So I'll speed this really quickly. I would like to thank, at the time he was my intern, Salvador, he did a lot of research on this. So a lot of this, uh, work is pertaining to, to his work. So APEG channel, what, what is a, a PEG channel? So APEG channel is a public educational government channel. Essentially, Fort Worth has one, it's their cable channel where they do all the presentations and stuff. Saginaw actually used to have one, uh, but I was told back in the early 2010s, it was taken away. Because I believe it was housed in this building before it was demolished and then it was removed because then the demolition happened and never returned. So with the PEG channel, we could get PEG funds, uh, which is a collection of about 1% of the gross revenue of the franchisees. So for example, it's charter. So charter will give us a 1% fee on top of the current 5% franchise fee, uh, the way our research takes. Again, uh, franchise fees, we'll speak more about it. But these funds can be used to purchase capital products like cameras, microphones, uh, screens for, uh, um, council meetings or just anything capital tangible that can be used for the PEG channel. I think that's all I got. So here's the legal backing on the PEG channel.
On that PEG channel, could you run the video like this meeting here? Could that be ran live across?
Yes, it'll be running live, uh, and also a recording of it as well.
Off of what?
A recording of it. So we'll just like, oh, it's Tuesday, uh, we'll just rerun last week's meeting. And also.
Then all your council, all your committee meetings also could run over that.
Correct. So, uh, here's the legal backing on that. So section 611 of the Communications Act, chapter six of the Public Utility Code, which is a Texas law. And, excuse me, and there's a law that requires SIGFA holders to provide a city upon request a PEG channel. SIGFA is the state issued certificate of franchise authority and it was established by state law. There's a picture of our current one, that is Spectrum, so charter as I know it as Saginaw, city of Saginaw. Just want to make sure I'm not skipping any notes on this slide. So why a PEG channel? We'll just go through this pretty quickly. It provides an additional medium where people, uh, where we could communicate to our residents. Council and board meetings will be streamed as well as city announcements. I actually spoke to some city employees where they said they found out there were job openings because of the previous Saginaw cable channel. It popped up and said, hey, we're hiring a part-time, uh, so-and-so and that's all they applied. This allows, a PEG channel allows the city to collect PEG funds as a source of revenue to use to purchase equipment. Laws and people change, so having a PEG channel established currently, it will allow us to get that revenue because the reality is not everybody has cable anymore. Uh, we're all moving to streaming. So that is why if the direction that we're going to take, if we do get a PEG channel, we'll also be implementing the YouTube streaming as well. And the equipment and company we'll be using that I've looked at, they will also provide a Roku app. So if you're on your Roku, you could click on the city of Saginaw and you can see recordings or the live stream. The plan is to start a PEG channel and streaming channel YouTube at the same time. Uh, again, uh, no action needs to be taken, just, just want to hear your feedback. Uh, this is actually a view of Longview's PEG channel. It shows their temperature and stuff and the middle screen where it says maintain, unmaintain, that's ongoing, that's changing. So that's where they pass their city council meetings, uh, any past board meetings and, um, and the one on the left changes as well. So that one was before this one was police department hiring and you have your scrolling text on the bottom for anything that's coming up. And this is actually from the YouTube page. It's kind of hard to screenshot a, uh, TV. So next steps. So the next step is just to hear, uh, the council's direction, uh, on this, to see if, if this is something we're potentially looking towards. And if, depending on the direction of council, we will have to reach out to our city attorney because charter, i- it's, it's very legal based on the PEG channel just because charter doesn't make any money. So if somebody doesn't make money and they're a private company and they're going to try to find ways to not provide that service. So any questions? I think the next slide should be questions, no, it's not.
It's great, great if we could do it for almost free.
Yes, great, yes. Any questions? If not, that is the end of my presentation.
And let's see how much it'll cost and let's, let's evaluate.
Alright, yeah, we'll provide that.
I think we can tell you a lot until we know dollars, but yes, we want to get better resolution and we want to get better streaming and broadcasting, absolutely. I think that's, I think everybody will be in agreement, meaningful to that.
I especially like the communications part of it in between all the other activities that we have going on. I guess that's what you were trying to explain, right?
I'm sorry?
Have, uh, like, slideshows or something going on between meetings and things to talk about.
Yes, so.
Upcoming activities and events and job openings and.
Yeah, so some cities, uh, during my research, they actually, uh, some cities take the route of making it a public access channel. So if there's a resident who wants to teach, like Julia Child or something. Of course, we wouldn't do that because, uh, those are very, very small cities who don't have a network there. Uh, some cities also partner up with their school district to provide their students who are in those programs to provide content for the, for this. Just because it's a one-man shop right now, um, I think that's the route we might take. PD has also wished to create PSAs and I believe fire will, will, will do as well. So, uh, there's actual PSAs out there that are free for cities to use that we could be streaming as well.
That sounds great. Hey, thank you, Pedro.
Yeah, thank you.
Great job, buddy. Alright, so we are at, uh, 8:48 PM, so we are adjourned into executive session pursuant to Texas government code 551 to 087, the Lower East Virginia Act of negotiations. We will return to adjourn. We will return to adjournment.
We shall return. We'll be back.